Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Northborough Select Board on July 14th. This meeting will be recorded. If anyone wishes to participate remotely, please refer to the agenda which is available on the Town of Northborough website. We are all in person, so I call this meeting to order at 6:31. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here or remotely who would like to offer a public comment? Okay.
We have a board member standing.
Sure. Can you bring him in? Hi, Robert.
He may be muted on the other end.
All right. Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for calling in.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, I'm not there in person. I'm the homeowner at 32 Crestwood. I say we have two small children, we have two small autistic children, ages three and six, which makes it hard for me to leave for the evening, which is one reason I'm not there. And as I understand, just to make sure I'm in the right place, this is about moving the telephone pole that's in the driveway, removing the telephone pole in the driveway at 32 Crestwood, and replacing it with two poles. One sort of in the front corner of the yard, closer, you know, away from the cul-de-sac.
Robert, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. This discussion is first on the agenda, and I'd like to technically open the public hearing. So can you stay with us? And I'm going to invite National Grid up to describe the project. Would that be okay?
Oh, yes, certainly. Please continue.
All right. So are you describing?
I'm not National Grid.
No, you're not. You laughed at us. Okay. So we have Scott Sharpentier describing the project, and I'd like to open the public hearing. So this is about National Grid to install one J.O. pole and relocate one J.O. pole on Crestwood Drive, beginning at the point approximately 80 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Crestwood Drive and Murdoch Drive, and continuing approximately 20 feet in the west direction. National Grid is proposing to relocate old pole 2-1, 20 feet north of the new pole, number to be pole one, Crestwood Drive, install new pole apostrophe C3, pole 1-50. Sorry, I don't know all the nomenclature for utility poles. But so, Robert, we're going to hear from Mr. Sharpentier first, and maybe some of your questions will be answered, okay?
Certainly.
All right. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if there's a representative from National Grid in the attendees' room, Jeff Silva possibly?
No.
No, okay. I expected a representative to be present. Regardless, it's a pretty simple pole petition. The resident, Mr. Ahern, lives at 32 Crestwood Drive. How he accesses his property with his vehicles is actually between a pole and a guy wire. And I'm sure Mr. Ahern can correct me or elaborate if need be. We went to the site visit.
We've hit it at least once, that's correct.
So we did a site visit. There's nothing strange or odd about it. It's one pole with one guy. Due to the span of wires, in order to move one pole, a relatively substantial distance, you have to add a new pole so you maintain overhead clearance without overstressing the tension in the wire. So you do have a memorandum in your packet indicating that Public Works and the town engineers recommend approval of this pole petition.
So I drove by the property on my way here. You're going to move it, so if I'm looking straight at the house in the driveway, you're going to move it to the right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the guy wire will no longer impede his access to his property. That'll be removed.
Okay. And Mr. Ahern, are you, does this answer your questions, and how are you with this project?
Unfortunately, I had questions that probably are National Grid questions about the project. But as I understand it, there are actually, if you might have, may or may not have noticed, there are two stakes in the ground. There's like a wooden stake with an orange, like an orange ribbon, right in front of the stone wall, just to the right of the driveway. And that's, in my understanding, one location of a new telephone pole. And then at the far other corner of the yard, near the property that's closer to Murdoch Drive, there's another stake in the ground. And that's the proposed location of the pole that the gentleman said they need a pole there because the other two poles will be too far apart. So in my understanding, those are the two poles.
That's correct, Mr. Ahern.
And the man who came, a man from National Grid came and spoke to me about this, and we discussed it a month ago or so. And one thing he mentioned was, there's a device, whose name I don't know as a layman, at the top of the pole that's in my driveway, that does some sort of electrical thing for all the houses in that vicinity? Is it, it's like a transformer or something? One of my questions was, would the new pole have one with enough capacity if we start adding solar to our house and to the other houses? Is that a, like, if the other house has added solar, is that a National Grid question?
That would be a National Grid question. What you're referring to at the top of the pole, does it look like a large gray can?
Yep.
Yep, that's a transformer. There's a fusible link on that. The fusible link opens in the event there's a surge, so that everybody's houses don't receive that surge. Putting solar panels on a roof actually lightens the load on the transformer. You, at times, may be putting power into the grid, meaning your electrical meter would go backwards. So if nobody's home in the summer, you don't have AC on because you're not home and you're on vacation, you're going to be making a lot of electricity. That would go back into the supply. So it doesn't add.
Wouldn't stress it, you don't think?
No, no, it actually does the exact opposite.
Yeah, I'm a total layman.
Yep, does the opposite.
I do have another question from my wife, which is, why isn't the pole to the right of the driveway going over the stone, on the other side of the stone fence, which is the property line, and in the next property? Why, why isn't that pole in, I guess it's 24? Is 24 the next house?
26.
32 is ours, 26 maybe, the next house.
The pole alignment is very strict. There's not a lot of flexibility in it. If you look at, if you look around and you see a pole that may be five feet out of alignment with the other poles, and that pole is 20 years old, it's leaning over substantially. They have very little deflection they're allowed to put into their poles without having guy wires or strain poles. So their goal and objective is to keep straight tangent lines for the utility lines, for their wires. It's interesting, you'll, when you drive around, if I'm not allowed to mention, you'll notice, you'll see poles that are like leaning way over in the woods, or, and when you look at the alignment of the wires, the wires have, over the years, bent that pole in that direction, so the wire is trying to be tangent. So they don't have a lot of flexibility where it goes.
Yeah, it is a complex situation. I stood out in the street yesterday, looking at the fact, I mean, you've got electric wires and then other wires, I assume, are telephone and cable, going to four houses. So it's complicated, I agree.
If you look at Brigham Street at the South Street side, there's new poles that have gone on. There's a couple sister poles that haven't been removed yet. I think they installed four poles in order to move one, so that they can maintain that tangent line stress. So it's not, there's not a lot of flexibility that they have.
When you say tangent line stress, you mean from the pole to the house?
No, no, along the alignment of the wires. There's a lot of, there's a lot of strain in those wires.
From pole to pole, you mean?
Yes, exactly. They've got to be pretty, pretty straight.
Okay. Anything else? I'm going to ask for comments or questions from the board. Anyone have any concerns, questions? Okay, then, at this point, we can close the public hearing, if there's a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Mike. The public hearing is now closed. Oh, right, sorry. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Thank you, thank you. So, do we have a motion to approve this pole petition?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve pole petition number 31109876, as submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Motion made by Laura, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Madam Chair, quick, just discussion point, if I may?
Yeah.
I'm in support of this, but just making sure we don't lose the point. I think one resident had asked us if we could condition this pole movement on fixing another pole movement around Brigham Street.
Right.
I appreciate the residents' concerns and think we should keep that on our radar for the next project. I think this is more of a unique need that was presented to help this resident's property be less encumbered, so I want us to not forget that, but I'm going to support this one.
I agree with you, and I picked up on the word "yet" from Mr. Sharpentier, who said, "The poles have not been removed yet."
Yeah, it's a complicated process removing utility poles. I'm happy to explain it to the board if you'd like.
Well, yeah, I think.
They're not solely owned. They're jointly owned. So National Grid and Verizon own the poles. So once, one entity moves their utilities, and the other one has to.
Uh-huh.
And one can't force the other. So this is a National Grid petition. National Grid wants to put the pole in. You really can't condition a pole removal that the applicant doesn't wholly own.
So next step, step two, Verizon will have to give permission to remove the pole.
Once the attachments are moved from the current pole to the new pole, that's when the municipality or the community can get involved and push them along, try to convince them to get that out of there quickly.
Okay.
Can I just make, sorry, can I make one comment on that? If we stress that it's a safety-related problem, will that expedite the agreement process and maybe like improve the response time for getting those poles adjusted?
Likely not. The poles have been there, they're in their current location, they've been there for a long time. The safety condition has existed for a long time. I don't see them being motivated much. Once the attachments are gone, then it's quite a bit different. We can motivate them quickly to get that out of there.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that.
So in the case that we're discussing tonight, they will remove that pole?
Of course, yes. But they need to get all the attachments gone first.
Right, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table. We had a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, so, next on the agenda is Costa Diva. Thank you for coming. So this is also a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. The Select Board is holding a public hearing today at 6?
45, exactly.
Oh, we have to wait?
No, no, it says 6:45. We're good.
Oh, good.
Right on time.
In this, according to Apple, anyway, it's 6:45. In the Select Board's meeting room, 63 Main Street, Northborough, Massachusetts, to act on an application to transfer the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Costa Diva Incorporated to Manam Ventures LLC, located at 35 Solomon Pond Road, Northborough, Massachusetts. And I think, does everyone know where this is? And would you like to tell us about your plan?
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Good evening, everyone. I'm part of Manam Ventures, and we're looking to start a high-end, fine dine, Indian, Italian, fusion restaurant in Northborough. So it's going to be a very different menu, and it's going to be mouth-watering, I can say that. Myself, I'm Samson Moses. I've had business experience, restaurant experience, back in India. I've had a restaurant for about seven years. It was a very successful Indian/Asian fusion restaurant. And then I pivoted to the automobile industry for a few years, and moved to the United States to pursue my American dream in 2014 with my family. And since then, I've been looking at, to pursue my passion, which is the restaurant business, the food and beverage industry. I was looking for a right place. It's been a long search for me. Wanted to have something really nice, as Casa Diva is. And so we spoke with Aurelio, and we came to an agreement that, you know, we'd like to have a fusion there. And here I am, trying to start a restaurant, a new restaurant there. We've partnered also with TKU, which is one of the largest Indian franchisee group back in India. They've also ventured now into the United States market. They have about four restaurants, which is flourishing really well in the Texas area, in Dallas. They have what, four upcoming restaurants in Chicago? And they have one in California, and one is going to be open shortly in Arizona as well. And will be the next location here.
So do they all have kind of the same menu, the same?
Well, it's a collaboration of Indian and, you know, to the native food, wherever they are, right? So we chose the Italian part of it, so we wanted to have an Indian/Italian fusion. And that's why we said, you know, we wanted to do something here around the area. I live in Lemonster, and we found the place, and we decided, okay, let's rock and roll, and here I am.
Well, welcome. And when you mentioned Aurelio, that's, he's the current owner of?
He's the current owner there.
Right. And so you'll be staying on for a while, I understand? To help?
Yes, he'll be, yes, he'll be helping us with the fusion and stuff like that, yes.
Okay. Well, are there any questions from the board or comments?
I just have one quick question. So do you mean like, instead of Italian meatballs, it would be like curry meatballs?
Well, yes, we're working on it. We're going to bring something really unique.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yes, yes, it's going to be very unique.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know fusion meant, okay.
And the hours, lunch and dinner, or just dinner?
It's going to be lunch and dinner, yes.
Lunch and dinner, okay. It's a beautiful location with the pond.
It absolutely is, yes. And I think for a fine dine location, that's a perfect location, right on the water, you know, where people can come and enjoy, and the community can be served well at that location.
And the background check by the police checked out?
Yeah.
So if there are no further comments from the board, are there any, oh, Jacob?
One quick one. Thank you for being here and presenting this application. This is not unique to you. I'll be making this comment for any liquor license transfer. Just as a reminder, you know, we want to keep our streets safe, and I know you all do too. And for anywhere where, you know, alcohol is being consumed, we always just want to make sure that policies are being followed. And it really, you know, you're a key player in that, to help us to be able to keep our streets safe. My preference is always prevention, rather than enforcement or dealing with the consequences of bad decisions, so please help us with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. All those protocols will be followed, and, you know, I'm very committed to that, towards the community. I have two grown-up boys, so I know the, what you mean. So, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's an important comment. Yes, Laura?
So thank you for choosing this location. I'm happy that you both will be working together and really bringing some new types of food to the town. Can you keep us posted when the, like, do you have an anticipated date for when this change is going to happen?
Most likely by 15th of August, something around that timeframe is what we're thinking. Just don't know, we, there's a lot of other moving parts as well.
Totally understand.
Yeah.
But if there is any type of celebration, we'd love to be a part of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We want to do everything to support you in these efforts.
Absolutely, we love that.
And wish you both the best, wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
And back to, is there any public comment, either remotely or here? No? Okay, then, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. All those in favor? And do I have a motion to approve the application for the transfer of the restaurant from Costa Diva to Manam Ventures LLC?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application for the transfer of the all-alcohol restaurant license from Casa Diva Incorporated to Manam Ventures LLC, for premises located at 35 Solomon Pond Road, with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to seeing you at the restaurant.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, do we have BJ's for a change of manager?
Good evening, members.
Good evening.
Hello.
Okay, so we are now going to consider the application submitted by Mormax, doing business as BJ's, for a change of manager to their all-alcohol package store liquor license for the premises at 6102 Shops Way, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, could you introduce yourself?
I'm going to introduce myself, just to describe the proposed manager's background very briefly. I'm Neil Mooney, an attorney representing BJ's. And I'm here with Dan Kramer, who is the proposed licensed manager. I believe the application has been filed with the board and is complete. Just briefly regarding Dan's background, he's the current club manager at the Northborough Club. He's held that position since January. He has extensive experience in alcoholic beverages retail sales. Prior to joining BJ's, he was, for three years, the manager at a shop right in Milford, Connecticut, which is permitted to sell beer in Connecticut. They use, they call their permits, and they have a different license structure than Massachusetts. Prior to that, for 19 years, he was a district manager for Stop &amp; Shop, overseeing a number of stores in Massachusetts and Connecticut, several of whom were also licensed to sell alcoholic beverages. He's tip certified. I have a copy of his tip cert with me if the board requires it, as well as a list of all the employees involved in alcohol sales at the club, all of whom are also tip-strained. And we have copies of those certs with us as well. A little more background that's not reflected in the application. Prior to beginning his business career, Dan served for four years in the U.S. Navy and the submarine service, based out of Groton when he wasn't at sea. So BJ's and I are confident that he's well-qualified and will excel in this role, and he and I are happy to answer any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
No, no. Thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
Just, you heard my comment before?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Appreciate all of it, yep.
Ditto to that, thank you, for your helping us with all of that.
Yes, sir.
And also, are the police report checked out? Everything is fine there? And there was, so is there anything else from the town side that we need to?
Everything checked out fine. Yep, we're good.
All right, then. So do I have a motion to accept this application?
Madam Chair, I move the board to approve the application for a change of manager submitted by Mormax Corporation, DBA BJ's Wholesale Club, for their all-alcohol package store license for premises located at 9102 Shops Way.
Second.
Motion made by John Ray, seconded by Laura. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you all in the club.
Yes.
A lot of you look very familiar already.
We know, we know, when you're hanging out in the aisles, we'll be stopping by and say hello. I'm sorry, working. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is a presentation by Anna Maria College regarding municipal employee tuition discount program. And could you please come up and introduce yourselves? And I'm sure you'll be?
Thanks.
If you want to pull up an extra, yeah, here. Yeah, no one's sitting here.
This one's fine.
That's great.
So you're comfortable. This one's more comfortable than the others. I have one here.
Oh, nice.
How's that, boss?
Well, she's the boss.
Stephanie used to be my boss.
Oh.
Back in the day, so, yeah.
Awesome. He was the chief.
We spent a lot of Select Board meetings together.
Yes, we did.
So, my name's Dave Armstrong, at Anna Maria College. Previously, I was police chief in Holden, served 35 years in Holden. And I've been at Anna Maria College for 25 years. And I want to just introduce you guys.
I'm Emily Cabrera, the dean of nursing and health sciences. I've been at Anna Maria for almost a year, but I actually have two degrees from Anna Maria, so 20 years later, it's a little different coming back as a dean and not a student, but it's a great position to be in.
Hi, I'm Jim Bidwell. I'm the dean of the School of Liberal Arts and Social Sciences. I've been at the school also now for 20 years. Started off as faculty and have moved into administration.
Welcome.
So virtually, I'll just give you a quick overview of why are we here. One is, for several years, I worked very closely with Northborough PD, Chief Leahy, Chief Liva, on accreditation. So I'm very familiar, I live in Shrewsbury, I worked in Holden. So Holden always mimicked Northborough size-wise. So our accreditation processes and things are very much alike. So over the years, we had built that bond. So I had a chance to see the inner workings of Northborough for years, because we compared notes a lot for years and years and years. And they were always there to help us. So I always had a special place for Northborough in my heart. And then when Stephanie came here, a very trusted person, innovative, and I knew her, so I said, "What a great place to virtually pilot this program that we've been developing." So we're really happy and excited to be here tonight. One of the things we found was, for years, we've worked with the police department. Education, Anna Maria's always been a big CJ house, et cetera. So I would be, on the CJ side of the house, I would be working with talking to, what can we do with law enforcement? What can we do to have?
I think you have to tell us what CJ is.
Criminal justice?
She just said that. Good question.
Criminal justice, right? So I'd be working with, on the police side of the house, and then we'd have somebody working on the fire side of the house, and then somebody working on the paramedic side of the house. And then, so we would always, as looking at these things, as we were using, as the college has been growing and we're pulling our resources together, we realized that we had a package that we could offer, but start at the top. Start at the top of the food chain, start at the top management, and have it go down where I don't have to go meet with the police chief today, or the fire chief. If we sign an MOU agreement, which covers all your facilities and covers all your departments, then we have a great tool to use as far as. then we have a great tool to use as far as what do you need. And what we found is that we've always, that there's several key elements in all of government right now. Retention, keeping people. How do we, how do we retain people? How do we train people up for new positions? How do we motivate people? How do we do organizational culture? All those things. And I realized that we have all that at the college. And like I said, I'm going to have Emily talk on, on her expertise and Jim talk on one of his. But virtually, what we can do is, we can package, in theory, whatever you need. We have a CJ degree, criminal justice degree. We have degrees in all these degree programs that are in your package. But maybe you need something else. Maybe you just need a certificate program in something. Jim's going to talk about a couple grants that we have from the state, million-dollar grants from the state, to go out into the community and give back on mental health and school safety and things like that. So we're getting all this, all these resources that we have, and it's, it's time to share. And what we like to do is put it into a package we call our partnership program. And it virtually covers everybody. You get 10% off tuition for everybody. If you're an alum.
I am.
Like Stephanie, she would get an additional 10% off. But everything is open at this point for, we have several portals and things now we can do. Jim's going to address that. So we're excited. We're excited to take all these things instead of being divided. Instead of Dave just talking to police, or somebody just talking to fire, pulling them, all the resources together is kind of, is what this program is all about. So, you want to talk a little bit about what we've done with paramedics?
Yeah, sure. So the intent of really starting with, you know, this kind of a discussion was to data gather to see what the needs were. And that way, we can have an MOU that's more specific to what your needs are. You know, that's the good thing about Anna Maria is that we're small enough to be able to accommodate what those specific needs, I guess is just the right word. So one of the things that came up through conversations was how fire department and paramedic EMT land in the town of Northborough are having some problems. You know, I'm not a town resident here, but just through conversation that there might be some retention, staffing, training needs, and Anna Maria can do that. We have a fire science program, a bachelor's in fire science. We have a paramedic bachelor's program. We have a paramedic certificate program and an EMT program. And to kind of, you know, work your way through that chain, most of the firefighters, and I, I think that is the, the state of the town of Northborough, please correct me if I'm wrong, in order to be sitting on the, the Department of Fire, you need to be an EMT, or they want you to be. So we can fulfill that need. And, and many of the firefighters wind up double-dipping. So they'll get a bachelor's in fire science, but also fulfill the EMT or a paramedic certificate at the same time. So one-stop shopping is always easier for the student, having numerous degrees, I can attest to that. But we have other things that we can do for you. So, you know, Dave and I and Jim have gone on some of these conversations with healthcare organizations. You have Coleman House right down the street. I know that they are desperate for CNAs. So through some of the other conversations that we've had, we're starting up a CNA program. They would get automatic entry into our BSN program, so they can go on to be nurses. And, you know, you really have a pipeline. So it's, it's nice to be able to know that you tell us what your need is, and, and we can try to figure that out for you.
It definitely gets into the community. We've signed MOUs Oriole Healthcare. We've signed MOUs with Christopher House. We have clinical sites we're setting up. So all these things, it gets into the community as well.
The, the CNA came from talking with Oriole Health, which was connected to Wachusett Regional High School. So we're actually setting up a scholarship program, which may be Coleman House, or, you know, town of Northborough. It, it depends on where you want that money to come from. But if you're a Wachusett High School student, and you go through our CNA program, they will automatically give you a job at Oriole Health, and they will actually give two full scholarships. There are those possibilities as well, you know, and that might help some of your needs.
So are, are many of the courses online, or?
It depends on the program.
Right. Some have to be kind of.
Yeah. You know, Anna Maria is a little bit away, but like, take for example, the CNA program. Just, you know, one example, didactic. So when classroom is online, lab, they would have to come to campus. That's on like Saturdays. And then their clinicals, which they get paid for, would be at the area nursing homes. So it would help the high school kids find their first job. They can start it at the age of 16. And then they can go all the way up to, you know, getting a master's or a doctorate in nursing. So it's exciting to be part of them. And I, I know that the push for EMT and paramedics is not necessarily to have a degree. They're usually certificate programs, but we also can fulfill that need if they want to go on and get further studies. And, and then fire science is always a bachelor's. So there certainly is some possibilities. And I think that they do have some of those classes online, because I know it is a bit of a hike. Took me about a half an hour to get here. So it's not too far.
And like Emily said, our program stretches all the way from the government section to the schools. Wachusett Regional High School, Keefe Tech, Worcester Tech. We have a lot of schools now that have signed their MOUs. We've done two at Wachusett. We actually have 111 students.
That came.
Wachusett students that are at Anna Maria right now for summer programs. So it's been very successful for us to have that partnership.
And you have two high schools.
We have a regional high school.
Regional.
And you have a technical school.
Right, right, right.
So that might be something that they're really interested in.
And to your question, you know, given the need, right, I mean, certainly there's degree programs, right, where, you know, they're taking multiple series of classes and things like that. But we're also, we're developing the capacity to offer just like training sessions. It could be like modules. It wouldn't even be like a full college course. We've, as Dave was saying, about five years ago, we ended up getting a grant from the federal government to go out and help train first responders in mental health first aid. And it was, it was a need in the wake of the pandemic and a number of other things that was desperately needed in various communities, particularly in the first responders community. It actually allowed us to develop capabilities that we didn't have. You know, we had the sort of the, the academic programs that naturally gave us people with those experiences. But we developed a whole additional set of competencies and trained people, you know, going out, going to, going to police stations, going to firehouses, you know, wherever, wherever it needs to go. And we developed that into what we call the Training Institute. And so that's something, again, it can be, it could be, it could offer something as small as a two-hour course on just a specific thing, and it would be online that you could take at your own leisure, whenever you wanted, when it worked with your schedule. Or it could also be something that could deliver, you know, a series of maybe a couple-hour sort of sessions leading towards a certificate. So we've, as Dave was saying, like, we have this capacity to sort of respond to your needs. A couple things, like, one thing that has flown, flowed right out of this mental health, is they're developing a course, a one-hour course on just general mental well-being for municipal workers, things like that. So again, we've got degree programs that might be of interest to people in the community, as well as we have this possibility to develop specific, you know, maybe training modules for, for various, people work for the community as well. And just a little bit on the schools, right, again, there's a nice alignment between what the state of Massachusetts is interesting, and where they're pushing schools to go, and what our, our abilities are. And so they're obviously very interested in college preparedness or career preparedness. And so things, there's dual enrollment programs. There's also these pathway strategies. I'm not sure what, you know, what the regional high schools, if what they've identified is these chapter 74s or different pathways, that they want to create specializations for students. Either it might lead them to a career, or it might lead them to go off to a college and pursue a degree in that. You can do, do some coursework, so you go off to school with, you know, three, four classes possibly. Again, we have a lot of programs, a lot of academic programs that align very nicely with what the, the state has set up for these pathway programs. And so gives us an opportunity to go, talk with the school, you know, we could work on developing one of our courses that could be taught in high school and count towards their degree, and also give them college credit at wherever they go. So again, it's this kind of the suite of possibilities that we have.
Yeah, Wachusett actually hired nine adjuncts. We, Anna Maria hired nine Wachusett teachers as adjuncts to teach their classes.
Oh.
To teach our classes this semester. And they did it through the grant proposal.
Yeah.
And they actually invited us to sit on the grant proposal team. So, yeah, it was nice that we get that involvement from the, you know, so nine Wachusett teachers are now nine Wachusett, Anna Maria adjuncts, teaching our classes for the summer. So it's been revolving, it's been growing. Like I said, 111 students this summer is a pretty amazing number.
You know, the intent is to really support your town employees, the businesses within your town, and its citizens, you know, which includes kids and all the way up to adults who want to go to school. So that's kind of why we've made it up to this level. Everyone keeps saying they have the same needs, and we're like, we're here for you.
Yeah, and it's, it's been this interesting development in higher ed, right? Now, as higher ed is becoming, you know, it's still doing what it's traditionally done, but it wants to have more direct connections with communities and, and, and more directly serve the concerns and needs. And so out of that, you know, again, that's, that's where this idea that those sort of larger streams going on in our society bumped up into what we were seeing, when, particularly when Dave and other people were going out and talking, again, to narrow, you know, small parcels. We see a big picture here. And this, this proposal sort of is a way of jumping up ahead and trying to capture all of it as much as possible.
In your packets are examples of the MOU draft that we've worked on for the town of Northborough. And at the end is the appendix of all of the degree and certificate programs that we can offer. And then, you know, we have more that we can add to that.
Right.
According to whatever you need.
Would those cards be free to contact anybody at any time?
So there should be a draft behind, I think, the flyers.
This one?
Nope, on the other side. Nope. Dave, you put these together. Did you put one? Somebody has an MOU draft. That one. Yes, yes.
Oh, oh, yes.
At the end is an appendix of some of the things that we felt is, you know, relevant that maybe you can consider. Yes.
Well, that was an excellent presentation and a very smart idea, it sounds like. I'm going to open it up for discussion to the board if they have any questions or comments. Anyone?
I guess just a question maybe for, for Stephanie, just in the mechanics of some of it, right? So say for like police-fire, right now, courses and accreditation and certificates that are job requirements, under their current contracts, are those reimbursed? Or, or, how are they reimbursed for that? Or how does that work?
A lot of, yeah, it could either be both, that they're either reimbursed, or it's paid for by the town.
Right.
But it is important because there's a lot, for instance, we had to, we came to the point that we changed our fire contract because we were only hiring, like, you had to be a paramedic first to, and we can't get anyone.
Everybody's dealing with the same issue.
So, yeah, so exactly, it's across the board. So it would be, it's unique in speaking to the different department heads. It would be interesting to get a program that's formed to our needs, rather than, you know, getting something that we don't necessarily need, you know, from A to Z, but just fine-tuning it. It could save us money. It could, you know, save us a lot of time, because we'll get everybody trained at once, which would be beneficial, so.
Okay. Now, would that say like, okay, it's advantageous because there's the 10% discount, or like, whatever savings that is, would police or fire or, or staff, would they have to, not, nothing against Anna Maria, but maybe because we're expanding our zone, it's just regionally or whatever, outside of their range, because they're on the other side of it. It's an hour drive for them as opposed to going somewhere else that may be closer, right? It wouldn't be saying a town employee would have to do Anna Maria because we get a discount.
I mean, there, there's the difference on whether or not it will be held online. Would, could anybody come out to a large group?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that would be more.
We'll even send a teacher, if you can find a cohort, we will literally go to your fire station and offer the classes.
See, that's, that's probably better.
We have a big degree completion project that we started years ago, because we had, honestly, we had a lot of veterans coming back. And there were kids that didn't finish their degrees. And we didn't have a program, so we started a program, so now you can finish your degree. We take up the 90 credits. They can finish their degree online. That program's online for C, criminal justice. And then they can get their master's degree, which is all online, as well as the MPA degree. And we find that fire, there's no real, fire is different than policing, as far as requirements, usually if you have a coin bill and stipends. But for fire, our MPA program is mostly made up of fire people. So that's all online, the MPA program for fire.
That's masters in something administration?
Just, I guess a question, not, what is, what do you need to do to get to be an EMT? Is it, so walk me through, is it four years?
Well, you need a driver's license. You need to be 18 years old.
Yeah.
And have an interest in wanting to be an EMT.
What's the requirement? Is it a four-year program? Is it certification once?
EMT certification, you can do it in four months.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to continue, you'd get your paramedic, and then that could be a certificate in nine months, or you can get a bachelor's for years, and then fire science is four years.
When I'm looking at the sample four-year program with the fall and spring semester for fire science, paramedic certification curriculum, how does this play into that?
Yeah, so that is for the degree. And then we have certificate ones. So you would just say, I want to do the EMT certificate, and you go for spring, and then bam, you're done. Like, we, are proposing, offering like a summer EMT program. And the other thing that's really nice, that's kind of come about these kind of related conversations, is that we can funnel our clinical students, so the EMTs can be funneled to your, like, departments. Because usually where people go for their practicum experiences, that's where they want to get a job if they really like it. So that can help with retention as well.
And what is the cost of an EMT certification?
As far as I know, it's 1,200? 1,400? 14, I think it's 1,400.
Yeah.
Which is pretty good, looking around. I, I know of an area, I won't say, because I don't have their permission, but that was about 2,700. So I'm pretty sure it's 1,400. But I would have to triple-check.
So even if the employee just decided to go on their own, having the 10%, discount, at least it helps them further educate themselves. Like, I know one of the reasons our senior center director, Kendra, left is because Westborough did offer, you know, some type of aid in education. So, I mean, this is essentially our aid. We're 10% off curriculum, so.
And even like, we could add things like, you guys are still your own dispatch center. We do 911 training right on campus at Anna Maria. And we, kids looking for internships. So we send, you know, you could send an intern into your dispatch center. They get their certification, and at some point, they become a Northborough dispatcher. That's what we did in Holden for years. That's how we fed the program. And it's very successful, especially when you get the local kids. You know, I was a local kid in Holden. My whole life, I was in Holden working. And, you know, I have a great FEDO program, and it's nice when you give that community back, that these kids are coming from the community, working in your dispatch center, then they become a firefighter, a paramedic, or a police officer someday. So it is a FEDO program. It does work. These kids work their way up, and they look at what the options are.
There is a shortage of people wanting to work in public government, right?
Oh, boy, yeah. Like, succession is like our, yeah, headache. Yeah. So, Jacob?
I had one quick question, just kind of out of curiosity, because I'm, I moved here more recently, so I'm not so familiar with all the schools. So comparing your, so I have the same question for both your degree programs, and then also your certificate or mat or other. What's kind of the breakdown between your students who are just fresh out of high school compared to your students who are second career, or let's just say later in life?
I think it probably depends on the program.
Yeah, very much. I would say, you know, a traditional undergraduate freshman, we're talking about, I think, Ron, we'll wait and see for the new fall.
Sure, sure.
Somewhere around 900. But then in our degree completion programs, and the fire science, and the criminal justice, those are the two largest ones. We've got.
Fire science.
In fire, yeah, we've got a couple hundred, right, degree complete? And then, of course, graduate programs are definitely, you know, they're, they cater towards a different, generally a different demographic. But we've built into our, a lot of our programs, the, what they call five-year, right, you can go, go straight, do four years, get your bachelor's degree, do one more year. Your senior year, you take some classes that are counted towards your graduate degree, and you graduate in five years with a master's.
Anna Maria is really interesting, because we, we market ourselves, you know, like we're a college. So we are that Catholic liberal arts institution, but we're really like a trade school. So we're kind of like this in-between, where the kids come out of high school, and those are, you know, the and those are, you know, the core competence, the core courses, and they're taking English 1 and 2, you know, they're 18 years old. But then we also have these trade, nursing, fire science, paramedic. And I would say the average age in nursing is probably early 40s. So they're mixed in with all these younger kids that they don't identify with.
Sure.
And then all of a sudden, no, the older adults are mentoring these 18-year-olds that want to go into nursing, and now they have to be real adults. So it's actually a good.
Great.
I would say fire science, most of them, the average age is like late 20s, early 30s that I've seen on a roster. CJ?
It's very important that we pay attention to this group that's 21 to 24 right now. They went to the academies, they've gone to fire academies, they've gone to police academies. They've done that yeoman's work. There was a crisis in hiring in all these areas. What we see now, though, is we're very young. Shrewsbury, 30, there's like 30 offices in Shrewsbury with less than three years on the job. It's almost scary for us guys that were in it for so many years because of the youth. But that youth is going to show us that we have to motivate them to become leaders by getting their degrees and becoming prepared for promotional exams. That's why the certificate programs, all these things where assessment centers becoming more with the rage, is that the more they get for the assessment center, the better they put themselves into a place for supervision. And there's going to be a lot of competition in the future because we've hired a lot of firefighters and a lot of police officers in the last five years. And we're very young, but these are the kids that we need to grab to get them trained to become supervisors.
CNAs are a great example. CNAs right now are like 17, 18, 19-year-olds. And not all of them, but many of them, don't want to do overtime. They don't want to work weekends, and they don't want to work nights. So what nursing home, assisted living, do you know functions without having nights, weekends, and holidays? So if you can grab the CNAs, those kids that want to be, or working adults that are in that bubble that want to go to nursing school, we can give them guaranteed admission into our BSN program. They have to get the grades. But it's the feeder, you know? And then it promotes getting them to work for entities within your town, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very helpful. I just was curious because I always want, you know, if we're trying to pitch something, people want to know that they'll fit in with your class, and it sounds like pretty much anyone would fit in.
Yes, yeah.
And we're nice. We're normal.
You are.
I can definitely see that.
So next steps would be, you talk to our staff and.
So I already have mentioned this a couple of times at my department head meeting, and that's the way I foresee it. What do you need, what are your needs in connecting with Anna Maria? So having the department head talk to their staff, like focus on how their department is run, how it can be run better, especially, you know, when it comes to educational certificates, other requirements that they have or they need and they haven't integrated yet. And then, you know, speaking with one of them to make sure that we could, you know, get a program put together. But I just think it's another benefit for our employees.
Go ahead. I do love the sound of the programs, so thank you for putting this together. Are there any, like, I know that there's the cost of tuition. Is there any other costs associated with this agreement?
You know, it really depends on the program because certain ones, you know, like nursing or paramedic or EMT, they might have a licensure exam or a certificate exam that happens at the end of it that is not usually covered, that's not at any school. But we try to incorporate all of our fees in like one bubble so that way they pay, you know, like the $1,400, that includes everything besides the exam that you take at the very end.
And they have to write, you know, they go through financial aid, veterans, we're very, you know, we take care of our veterans.
No, I hear you. Probably didn't ask the question properly.
Sorry.
No, no, no. I understand there's the cost for the programs, but is there any cost to the town as, okay, just the tuition?
Yep, I know, that was my first question. Don't worry.
No, the discount, that's what you had.
How much is it, this much?
No, it's a benefit to everybody, yes.
And then maybe, and I actually see your EMT certificate program is $1,040 on your website.
$1,040? So even better. I switched the four.
But.
I'd have sold it 14.
Yeah.
That might change now.
So I think, just a question for Steph, just my own, like, what is our reimbursement policy on what the town pays for for education for staff?
God, I'd have to look that up depending on the union. Yeah. Unless, Jason, you would, but it is per contract.
It is per contract, okay.
So I think the main departments this will benefit would be, I pictured, you know, public safety, police, fire, but a lot of it, health and human services for like counseling, mental health. Well, we have that at the senior center, we have.
Social work has been growing.
Social workers, right, exactly. Our police department even has a social psychologist, so, yeah.
And the social work is actually a program that right now is, we're developing and will be able to offer the complete degree online as well.
Yeah, that's great.
We're making that transition. We're definitely finding as, as we, again, we try and reach people who aren't in that space where they're traditional 18, I'm going to go off to college, right? That it becomes difficult to make it work because they're, you know, so online becomes the mode that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
Anybody would ever like to come to campus, we're always available for a tour. And if you need us for any staff meetings, just let us know.
Great.
September 18th, we're showing off our new nursing, EMT, and paramedic lab space. We got a $1.2 million grant from Jim McGovern and then $975,000 in endowment money. And we literally, if we have a disaster, we can have a mini hospital ICU.
Oh, great.
So we'll invite you.
That would be great.
September 18th.
And as we, we put you into our partnership program, this is what we consider, is we consider you an advisor for that, so that would be.
No, that's great.
You want to, you want to add on that?
I'm just wondering, I'm a board member, but would we qualify for the discount if we wanted to go back to school?
Actually, I read.
We are municipal employees, according to some forms I signed.
No, I did read, I did read, as I was reading the MOU here, I did read that it said Northborough employees and residents will benefit from a range, but I don't know the scope in which you're proposing for.
Well, that would be a negotiation, you know, how much of a discount and who would like.
For residents, yeah.
A discount without, yeah.
Yeah, so in here, built into this memorandum of understanding, the only flat thing mentioned was the tuition discount for employees. But what I, what I'm understanding, sort of our commitment, if we were to get into this, would be, we would, did I be designating, designated representative? And I don't know, Steph, if you'd given some thought on who you were thinking that might be, or we can talk later. But seems like we are committing to have a designated representative to meet periodically. It says annual basis, at least once a year to assess. So that's a, you know, very minimal, but a commitment that we're making. But other than that, I'm not seeing sort of, since it's not like an exclusivity, it's just an added option. It seems like, other than the small amount of time for someone to coordinate this, it's not a huge commitment from the town.
Oh, no, no, if anything.
And there's not a lot of downside. Am I missing something?
I think it's more on us to reach out and keep things updated. There's a lot of fluided, fluid movement in both education and town government. This board might change next year. And one of the things that we've been looking at is doing a better job of keeping things updated with everybody and make, and we got behind years ago doing that. Databases were outdated and things like that. So our big goal is to maintain partnerships with interaction, like staff meetings, online visits, visits to the campus, you know? That's a goal because we didn't do a good job of that years ago. We had a lot of partnerships that, you know, they were just on paper. And when this crew meets in front of you, it's personal. When I sit in front of somebody, it's personal, it's my reputation. And so we're going to do a better job of those things.
Thank you. When Watchusid is texting me at 10 o'clock at night, I'm going, I got to get a better work life. That's good.
This is so fun. So I just have a quick question. So you mentioned that, like, someone like Stephanie would be advising, helping you figure out which, which kind of programs we really need?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, a program or a course or something, you know, a certificate, right? I mean, that's, you know, obviously, our, the big things we offer are degree programs, but we understand that there's many people, that's not what you're looking for. Many offices, they wouldn't be looking for that. They'd be looking for smaller, sort of, specific kind of training sessions or maybe a couple, a series of training sessions that would really help build skills, get a certificate, something like that. And so, yeah, that's why the conversation needs to take place at a regular basis.
Right, yeah.
So we hear what you need, and then, you know, we can bring it back to our, you know, our faculty and see, you know, what we can do.
And I could invite them in as part of our department head meeting. And, you know, if anyone has questions for you guys or an idea, that would be good. Or they could just reach out one-on-one.
I mean, I remember going to how to deal with Gen X, right? That was a big thing. How do we deal with Gen X people in, you know, in government? And now, well, is there now a place for, how do we deal with the next generation that we have to hire? You know, all things like that that we can, we can handle.
Yeah.
Well, we've heard a lot about public safety, health and human services, but the director of DPW was right in front of me. And I wonder if, you know, if there's a need there, would you consider something? Okay, all right. So we, there's no motion necessary? Well, we're just going to move on with this arrangement?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're very excited, we have a new president. He just started July 1st. So this, we're hoping that this will be his first MOU signing. So hopefully we can do it in a professional manner and have the president and things do an official signing and sign the MOU at some point when we have the final draft. That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, that's great. So why don't you guys review what you have? And if there's any questions, yep, you can just let me know, and I'll get in touch with Dave or Emily or anyone.
She's available at night.
Yeah.
I got it off at midnight.
After business hours.
Well, it sounds like you are trying to fill a great need, and this was very interesting.
Thank you, it's very rewarding.
Thanks for making the trip out.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, thanks, I'll pass them down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have presentation and discussion for the Tax Increment Financing, TIF, proposal from San Coban. If we could have our neighbors, please.
Oh, hello. Hi there.
To present.
You said it correctly, too.
San Coban?
Yeah. I can't get there yet.
I did have high school French.
Oh, see, that's fine.
So this is about your proposal for your TIF agreement, and we're happy to have you here tonight. And I think you're going to have a little presentation for us?
Yes.
And could you please introduce yourselves?
So thank you for having us back here. So I'm Todd Denoye, VP of Innovation R and D for San Coban North America, and oversee the center here in Northborough, Mass.
And I'm Leslie Rubin, I'm San Coban's, and I didn't even say it correctly there, economic development consultant. No, I have to tell you, so I was just recently over in Europe, first time ever, that kind of thing, and I was told, oh, fluh. You know, I got to pronounce it correctly. People kept stopping me.
I just want to make sure, Dana, everybody's okay with the mics here?
You can hear it?
All right, okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, we're just double checking.
Okay, so, do you have a?
No, we're just going to.
Talk us through it.
So what happened was, we had that meeting, that sort of a high-level discussion, and we determined, Stephanie and I afterwards, that the best way to handle this was to go ahead and talk you through the model, and then I would send the model to her so that you could have follow-up discussions. That seemed to be the best way to approach it. Okay, am I correct on that, Stephanie?
Yeah, they just, you know, would like us to discuss the, any agreements, you know? They don't want to have any documents public that aren't going to be part of the actual agreement, so they kind of want to talk through the points first.
Okay.
And then we'll send it for review, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess a little reminder in terms of the context, so thank you for having us back. So we're here representing San Coban Research North America. We've been here in the community for 40 years. We're working on renovating our campus, so over 80,000 square feet of renovation, really addressing our oldest building on campus that's 40 years old. We're in the process of going through the architectural design. We completed 30%, okay? And we had the support from you from the town, annual town meeting to kind of bring that back and get approval to go to 60% design. So we're now in 60% design with our architects. Our next milestone is the Q3 timeframe, and we're here to kind of work on a tax incentive financing proposal with Leslie, go through and just. We are active in the community, we still have many visitors. We feel that we bring a lot of economic development to the, to Northborough and Marlborough. We actually checked my numbers, say, I think we presented, we have over 6,500 visitors annually. We're 4,300 to date. We have over 2,000 contractors and suppliers to date in 2025, over 1,400 visitors from San Coban who to at least stay, so we are still very active in the community. And so I'm going to let Leslie walk through the model, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so my job, of course, is playing with numbers, and, which is fun, it is playing with numbers. I thought, well, I had to add a little bit of context. So I got ahold of Stephanie, and I asked her to please put me in touch with the assessor's office. I thought, well, we kind of know what the range of investment is. Maybe I can work with the assessor and get an idea of what the assessed value would be. So the gentleman and I talked for the better part of a half an hour. He was very gracious. He told me, well, there are two ways that they approach the assessment. He said, the first thing that I do is I look at the income model. I go out there and I figure out what it would cost to lease a space like that, and then I come up with some sort of figure. And he said, the second way that I approach it is I look at the square footage, and I look at all the improvements to that square footage, I look at how specialized that square footage is, and I come up with a square footage model. He says, and then I marry the two models, and then I send my proposal off to the state. So my next question to him was, is there some quick methodology that I can use to say if I start with an investment somewhere between 80 and $100 million, can I come up with an assessed value? And he said, well, no, I got to go back to the income model, and I got to go to the square foot model. So I thought, all right, I'm going to be much better off if I just tell you that I started with a round figure, $100 million. And what I did was, in this particular model, I kept the tax rate constant over time. I thought, there used to be a time when I would tell you that I varied the tax rate from year to year, trying to project what communities would do, and I would start applying depreciation on the buildings. And what I realized after doing this for many, many years is that the model is just about as accurate as it would be if I just kept everything constant. So no depreciation, no changes in the tax rate when you start calculating what is the tax rate going to be. We did this, and in the start of this model, I was given several mandates. One which was, the model has to be fair. They are active members of the community, they insisted that there be a relationship that is beneficial to both parties. The second part of that was that it had to be some model where there's a goodwill that's being demonstrated in that model to the community. And I'll tell you how we address that in a second. And then the third thing, of course, is they have to have a number that's big enough that's going to impress the corporate parent. That one's a little more nebulous, partly because, you know, you're trying to look at that crystal ball and figure out what the, you know, how well you stack up against another group out there that's looking for similar dollars. And then what we explained to you in the past is that the way the parent company works is they have a bowl of some money, and they allocate that money to projects based on return on investment, need, you know, opportunity, what does the market look like? So there's a lot of variables that come into play, and one of those variables, believe it or not, is economic assistance from local state communities. And they'll do their rank ordering, and they'll make assertions as to how they're going to allocate money. It's not an endless pot. It's a pot where this R and D center is in competition with manufacturing operations. And what you know about an R and D center is that it essentially is a cost center and not a for-profit operating institution. So their numbers are going to look different, the return on investment is going to vary. So going back to the model, what I had to do was to work with the team to come up with some set of numbers that would began to make it look like, again, it's fair, it shows you goodwill, and it's, so what we did was, we said, all right, if we start with that investment at $100 million, we apply the constant tax rate, we apply, you know, no depreciation, and start with four years of additional tax revenue to the community. In other words, no tax abatement years, one through four. Start the tax abatement in year five, run it for 15 years. Start the tax abatement in year five, run it for 15 years. What does that begin to look like? Based on our calculations, right now, your annual dollar contribution, and this is public knowledge, is if you combine both the real estate and the buildings, about $306,000, $308,000 of tax revenue annually. If we layer on top of that, the tax impact from that first four years, it's an additional, again, this is a model, $2.4 million, right on top of it in the first four years. Then if we kick in the tax abatement over, you know, for the 15-year period, we showed it as a declining scale, which is a very common thing. And I've got plenty of examples I can share with you on that. What would, happens over a period of 35 years is that the impact to the community is on the order of $34 million of cumulative taxes, where the tax abatement value is about 13 million. Now, some could say, why did you go out 34, 35 years? Partly because there was somebody who was concerned that that tax was going to fall off at the end of the chart. So we decided to run it out a long period of time so you could see that it goes on. We wanted to make sure that you understood that we see this as sharing any upside potential. A tax abatement, the way that this works is it does not take away the baseline. If, if this project doesn't happen, your $306,000 goes on forever, or, you know, minus whatever depreciation there is, or whatever little improvements they make. What we're saying is, let's take the tax abatement out of the increase part, the top part, so that there's no risk to the community. It's all on the upside. And that way, we can feel good about the number we're presenting to corporate, where we can also feel good as a member of the community, because we're saying, look, we're giving you goodwill, we're sharing four years upfront. Yes, we need a significant number for the tax abatement, we're not taking it out of baseline, we're taking it out of the increment over time. And then you're going to benefit from this, because this is more investment, more jobs, and more opportunity for people. So the model, and I will share it with Stephanie on a piece of paper after the fact, the reason we wanted to hesitate giving it to you, because we didn't want to set an expectation. We don't want it out there in the public arena. This is the number, and this is the number everybody's agreed to, because we don't know what the final number is until you get bids. We don't know what the final number is until the assessor does his or her, you know, analysis on it. So what we're going to hand over to you is a model. It's just, it's a model with some fictitious numbers in it. Ballpark, probably, but still a fictitious set of numbers. The important part is there, while there's additional tax revenue, they're not going to take a piece of that. They've already proposed, will delay, because you're going to be spending money on an annual basis for a period of up to four years while the building's being built and renovated. It's significant. It's 20, 25 million dollars a year. So it's not like this is just, you know, little dollars. And so that tax revenue is growing, and then what happens is there is, a tax abatement kicks in when the buildings have full assessed value, and then that scale, that benefit declines over time, and now you're coming back up with full tax value again. So I know it's confusing, because all I'm doing is talking with my hands at this point, so I apologize for that. Again, we wanted to be very careful to not set an expectation for the community without having the real numbers to operate from. But the, again, the, the important part here is the, we believe we can create a model that's a win-win, number one. Number two, we want to demonstrate goodwill. Definitely want to make sure that you have the benefit of additional tax revenue before we begin to see the benefits. So it's, it, think of it as, sometimes states do their, well, we want them to do the project before they get their incentive. That's, you know, they, we call those performance-based incentives. Tax abatement historically hasn't been one of those, but we're setting it up so like it is a performance-based, because you'll know that you've got some revenue coming in, you've got the building built, and that'll be the situation that you'll have in your hands working with before the numbers start kicking in. So we could answer questions. Like I said, I've been talking with my hands.
Okay. So I'll open it up to questions and comments from the board. Anyone?
So, so thank you for the presentation. So, so that's sort of roughly what you laid out, that would be the goal of getting to, and forgive me for, for lack of maybe correct terminology, but like 100% of design and construction of what you've got planned. So sort of roughly with what you laid out, that's what we'd be looking for, or looking at, is 100% of what's on the table, that you've guys, on your end, have.
Hundred, not, 100% is not 100% of investment.
That's what I mean. The investment in that at your facility.
Yeah. So the tax abatement wouldn't kick in until there's been 100% of investment. But there's ongoing additional tax revenue, because if you, they call it a work in progress assessment, and if the building is 50% done, they tax it as though it's 50% done.
So in, in lack of having numbers and spreadsheets, can I test my understanding of what I've heard so far?
Sure.
Okay. So let's start with proximate taxes today call $307,000. The abatement, the two, well, not the abatement, the $2.4 million over four years, help me understand that a little bit more.
Oh, that, that's the goodwill contrib, in other words, we're saying no tax abatement in those four years.
So you're saying, like, we'll get you to full appraised value over those four years, and we'll incrementally pay along the way, and then it'll be fully assessed at the value in which it would be without abatement, as, as goodwill?
As, as goodwill. You'll get, and, and I use the term 2.4 million, because you add the four years up based on the model.
So, yeah, so rough math, yeah, what, I guess, so it is staggered. What do you think year four number is of 2.4? Because it is, it is incremental, right? It's not 600 per year, it's probably three.
No, it's more, it's like 1.4, something like that million.
In, in year four.
Yeah. So it's, it's little bitty, like the first tax, additional tax revenue, and it grows like this, and it grows again.
Does the 1.4 include the 307 in that example, or is it incremental?
No, that's incremental.
So you're looking without this, you're looking year four at 1.7 million dollars roughly?
Yes.
Okay. Helpful. Next question that I have. Help me understand, we're year four now, fully built, beautiful building, everyone's happy. Now, help me understand the abatement process. We're getting back to what number?
So, so what happens is you, if, based on our proposal, it starts at 100%, and then it declines by 5% per year, meaning that you're, you, after year four, you're at, you're 306,000, 307,000 again, and then the next year, you're sitting at 378, then 449, then 502, and then you're working your way back up to 1,700,000.
Over what timeframe?
That's over the 15 years. So it's 5% per year.
Fifteen years, we get to 1.7?
5% increments per year.
So we get 5% increments a year up to the 1.7?
Go ahead.
I don't want to, I want to pay attention to John's questions, because they're great. But just along this, and I, I understand that, you know, we're talking ideas and models, but one of my reactions is, it sounds like we would, if, if this was the model that was adopted fully, sort of as outlined here, we would need to plan for a pretty significant drop in revenue between year four and year five, because we would be going from the quote-unquote "full developed assessed value" to dropping back down to the original baseline, which I don't know exactly what that delta's going to be, but it's going to be not an insignificant amount of our overall revenue, probably.
Part of the strategy was to front-load the dollars, so that you have an, a pool that you could theoretically draw upon, so that...
I appreciate that. I, I'm not fully faithful in the town's ability to plan ahead that well, but we could certainly do our best. I just wanted to make sure I understood that, though.
Yeah.
Well, that, that would be at our end to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not blaming the model for that. I'm just, I just want to make sure I understood, and I think I do. Thank you.
And then, year, year, year five, so year five, should I think about year five when we get back to that baseline of the 307 in today's valuation assessment? Year five would be, year, 5% a year for four years to get to a different number for year five?
After the first.
After we've, yeah, so year four's done, it's.
Year four's done, okay.
Now we're year five.
Now we're year five, so you're back.
And we're starting it with 307 today, as an assessed value.
Right.
Should, should I think about year five as?
So, so year five, where you'd be, you'd be, your tax, guaranteed tax revenue, think of it that way, is, is 307. So you're, we've not eroded the baseline, the baseline is still there. So then what happens, in year six, now that's increased another 5%. Year seven, it's increased to 10%. Now, year eight, it's increased 15%.
You want to do the math, year one, two, three, and four, 1.05, 1.05, 1.05, 1.05, to get a year five number that has been increased 5% along the way over those four years. Does that make sense? I can explain it differently.
I might need it differently.
So, so today, we're sitting at 307.
Right.
Right? And we're talking about this $2.4 million over four years, and then we're going to get back to an assessment that is in today's 307 range. You could say that you take the 5% in year five, do year one, 1.05, 5% increase, 1.05, and whatever that math does, I'll give it my phone, but that'll get a higher number than 307 year five, or get a number that had grown 5% over those years from when you started the project to you finished it. But I, I don't think I hear you saying that.
No, and I, and so I'm, I'm a little lost in terms of your translation, so I apologize.
No, no, I'll work with yours.
So, so what we're saying, and if I can do this right here, is, and I apologize for not distributing the, the model itself, but you've got your, think of your pool of money. Okay. Normally, let me back up here, let me tell you how tax abatement normally works with manufacturing companies. And, and usually, they'll have a horizon where they're spending a heck of a lot of money on year one, and the tax abatement begins year one. So they never see the increase benefit to the community. What they see is immediately 100% tax abatement, so they're still sitting here at baseline. And then it declines like this until baseline, you know, and, or the tax abatement number is gone completely, and they're getting the full benefit. In this case, we delayed it four years in order to make sure that it was kind of what she was saying, well, you know, I, I like the extra money, but I, you know, as, now I'm going to go on a diet again. So the, the idea was, how, how do we manage that in assistance with you, so that you aren't feeling like you're being starved, even though there's this new, nice building out there and there's all this going on? Which is why we proposed to delay it, the start of it.
Yeah. And what I'm seeing, that year five is an artificially lower number than today, because my taxes have gone up 5% a year over 12 years, and your taxes.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, but you've got the other accounting effect of depreciation.
Yep.
So, so you've got a 40-year-old building.
Yep.
That, you know, if it isn't fully depreciated, probably is near to it. And so, so you've got those two opposing forces working out, which is why I kept it constant.
Okay. We can, I'll wait for the model, because I think I still have to see it to understand it. There's two things I don't, I don't, that aren't obvious to me, in, in what's been presented and discussed. The first one is the, is the outside of the hard dollars in which the tax revenue that this site will generate from Northborough is the more investment. The hotels aren't in Northborough. They're in Marlborough, and there's one in Berlin. The restaurant footprint's relatively small on the side of town. I work for a $170 billion company that's located in Marlborough. Nobody leaves Apex. And to get them to come to Northborough, where I live, close to Apex, they don't. So I'm skeptical of what the economic benefit to Northborough is, with all the people coming in and doing the, all the great things of Saint Caban, when your employees travel there and you do all this cool stuff. The more jobs. It's 60 jobs net total, of which 5% of current employees live in Northborough.
I think that's the number.
That was presented by you. So, three people. So again, that's 5% of six. So, so where I don't see this holding water is in those two things. Like, that's where I'm a little skeptical of this, in terms of like the economic benefit to Northborough. And then just the last one, I'll, I'll stop.
So, so the other thing you didn't hear about that model was that there's going to be a personal property investment. There's no proposal for tax abatement on the personal property. It's another $25 million, roughly, roughly, roughly.
I don't, I don't think I, I know.
Equipment, equipment.
Like, all the equipment within the building?
All the equipment. All we're talking about here is real property. So there's, there's going to be some economic benefit associated with that. The other part of it is, and I, I have my recommendations in terms of thinking you guys ought to build your own hotels in this community, but.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Any employees who want to get married, we have maybe.
That's right, that's right.
Spot for that.
What we do know is that people do buy meals. What we do know is that there are some rental units, that sort of thing. Can I quantify it for you mainly? No. But you, what you have to do is think about it in terms of some of the contractors, some of the services that are being generated, which does help. The economic, we do weigh in through the economic contribution, it was significant.
I guess I'd rather be Marlborough in this conversation than Northborough. I mean, if, like, if I'm looking at the winners of this, I'm Marlborough right now, and, and I don't.
But wait, 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 wait. Marl doesn't get to claim the payroll. You do.
Yeah.
Northborough gets to claim.
Well, they get to claim the Marlborough payrolls, all the payroll.
No, all the payroll is Northborough.
Even for the team that'll work in the fire.
We have, we have that in the, we have that in the numbers when we say that, with that more clearly line item, some of the things we're talking about.
Yeah, and we can certainly do that.
It would just be helpful for me trying to do numbers.
And the other thing I want.
And we did provide the payroll numbers last time, too. It's greater than 40 million in payroll.
Yeah, it's greater than 40 million, an average wage of $118,000 a year. So when you say it's just five jobs, you know, that's still a lot of payroll.
And we did provide, the guidance on permits in Northborough is about 600,000, water is about 30,000. Visiting meals estimate between Northborough and Marlborough is about 260,000. So we provided that in the last presentation.
I saw, I remember, I remember. We had that discussion on campus.
So we do understand a Northborough hotel situation, restaurants different than Northborough, but there's still some benefits.
And then, and then Marlborough chose not to do a TIF for that $30 million investment.
Because there wasn't the jobs there, there wasn't the payroll there in, in Marlborough. It's all in Northborough.
No, the, the economic equation's different, it's in the hotel tax and the other tax. But that's helpful. And then what if, what if you don't get a TIF?
Okay. So, so it's a very legitimate question. So let me explain to you what happens at the, at the corporate level. They have line items, and of course, they want to see the budget that's being proposed, they want to see the return on investment, they want to see, and they want to see the economic assistance. If you don't get the TIF, or some other economic assistance, you're at a disadvantage competitively.
It will impact my approval process.
Well, I guess, I guess the advantage we have is you're located in Northborough when you're not building something new. We'd be at a clear disadvantage if you're building something new, I think. But like, I'm trying to understand the investments you make on your campus and what that could mean.
So you've got a 40-year-old building that's deteriorating, and if you, and it's already band-aided together pretty much with HVAC systems, you know, as much as you possibly can. The risk is that, that they're not in a position to be able to address the needs of the various business units. And the business units come back and say, well, we've been thinking about this, we'd rather take those people and go elsewhere.
No, I, and totally agree. And, and I, and then none of this is to mean that Saint Caban's not a good company and good partner, none of this, but, but it is to understand, because one of the things, as I think about this investment of a company that has a $50 billion market cap and $4.5 billion of free cash for a year, and I think about being the R and D Innovation Center for the Americas, and I think that's a really strategic place, and on your website, you talk about how valuable that is in terms of 294, 95, the Pike, and what that offers you to recruit and retain talent, and the percent of PhD they're able to recruit and[1561.66] they're able to recruit and retain talent. Northborough's a unique asset. And I think that it's, and I think it works for St. Caban and I think it works in Northborough. So I'm just trying to, in a fairness perspective, when I look at fairness, and I look at fairness for residents and businesses, I want to get comfortable that like, this actually makes economic sense for Northborough to do something like this because that part hasn't been as obvious to me in the process.
Well, like I said, we're hoping that you'll see it as an investment in helping to help corporate make the decision that puts the money into this community. They don't have to, they can, we hope they do. We do honestly, we wouldn't be sitting here if we didn't think that it's important for there to be a TIF to support this project as it goes back to corporate. There is an expectation. There are line items on these reports that go back to corporate that says, okay, what's your economic assistance?
And CapEx is competitive, so, and we really mean that statement. So St. Caban does invest globally, all right? The region, we are, you know, we do get good funds for manufacturing sites. If you look at the news, we're building and putting quite a bit into manufacturing assets. The reason we're in this age condition is because of the competitiveness of CapEx and not having funds to kind of put it into the center. That's why we're at this stage. And so we're asking for money, but we're also asking for assistance locally as well. And then again, it is part of the process. I do have other sites in Massachusetts, I'm trying to consolidate here, I don't need to. I can, there's like three other sites that are part of this project. I do have other R and D sites where I invest in as well. So it's, it's just looking at the overall investment strategy for R and D innovation in North America.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the year five is very important, right? And from our perspective, it's super important, right? Five years from now, roughly 2030. We've also got an important building that we're going to be looking to either renovate or construct, which is a school building, a Peaslee School Building. So not to negotiate it obviously right here, but that's sort of from our perspective, right? We're going to be asking a lot of our residents, current ones like yourselves and many others, myself and everyone else who's listening, you know, to fit probably significant bill, whether that's a full renovation or a new building, whatever that is. I'm sure it'll have, you know, have quite an impressive price tag. So that's kind of where we're kind of coming from, from our perspective is, you know, we're looking holistically and, you know, we're looking at, you know, a building for ourselves that, you know, is going to be part of the education legacy of Northborough probably for maybe 75 or another 100 years. So that's kind of, kind of where, you know, speaking for myself, kind of where I'm thinking. And then also just kind of wondering, and you don't want to put the cart before the horse, obviously, but there's a level of investment that you're looking for in this site with the TIF that we can come to possibly an agreement on. Not sure if these conversations have happened or whatnot, but is there additional level of investment after that? Or is there additional expansion after that that your company would be looking to do possibly at this site?
So I'm always evaluating that relative to what makes sense for scope. To meet the needs of our businesses as well. So I'm doing a strategic plan on a regular basis, actually, in looking at what needs my businesses have, because we are a service center. We provide R and D labs and other aspects, too. So we're constantly evaluating that. We do a lot of mobility of equipment around the site to make sure we're putting new assets in where need be, whether it be processing R and D. So I think on an annual basis, we're reviewing what the needs are. I'm offering always to kind of put things in the Northborough site because I do see it as a strategic investment for this location in that site. But I do have to balance that with other sites as well. But we review it on our annual basis, actually.
So we've recognized that, you know, what we've put on the table is one model.
Yep.
We, and we've agreed to go ahead and to send that off. We understand, Stephanie even gave us a heads up, look, you know, we've got some things coming up. We have to start looking at the numbers, we have to figure out what's going to happen. I didn't know specifically what she was alluding to, but understand that. That's part of what this discussion's all about, what works for you and what works for us.
Right.
And we wanted to share a few components that we thought would make things work on both sides, including the 2.4 upfront before they kick in in year five. So, you know, again, showing certain components of the model and how we think the model can work.
Well, luckily, we have our financial planning committee here and also appropriations. So we'll have to figure out a way to put that aside safely. Jacob.
Yeah, so thank you. First, to the chair, I was thinking it may be helpful if, I don't know if we can just do this through Stephanie or what, but if we actually engaged with our assessor's office to have them give us any comments.
Oh, absolutely.
Or opinions, I think we, this board would, I think it would be beneficial to hear what our assessors think and get their opinion. So I don't know if Steph, you can do that, or if Julianne, if you sent them a note to say, hey, please give us your comments and opinions on this. I think it'd be especially beneficial as we consider what is best for the town. So I would like to see that. Now, to you folks, thank you for being here and putting this work. I was going to, I think you kind of answered one of my questions just now when you were coming. I was going to ask, you've talked about a model, did you have a backup model you wanted to mention to us? Or obviously you would, negotiation is the nature of negotiation. This wasn't the model I was expecting, but I also was very open-minded to, you know, look, you guys have a lot of time. And I appreciate the concept of essentially keeping the status quo, including the increase for a period of time. And I'm like, that's, that is good faith, that does sound like a good move. I'm just concerned about what happens when that drops off because my experience is we're not so good at amortizing that.
So we were hoping that maybe if we put something out, because that was the request, was put a proposal together, put it on the table, let you have a chance to go through it.
Yeah.
And then maybe we have a group meeting or something where we talk it through and talk about the pros and cons, what does it look like, you know?
Yeah, no, and I absolutely, I came here from Arizona and we, several years ago, and Mesa had done like a $6 million thing for Intel. And certainly everyone had their opinions on whether that was good or bad. The city of Mesa said it was good for them, but individuals have different opinions about, oh, special sweetheart deals for big companies who have lots of money and they don't need it. And I, you know, I can imagine that there's going to be residents, and if you could comment on this, but there's, we're going to have residents who feel, and maybe appropriately, that, well, gee, I'd like a tax abatement, I contribute to the economy of Northborough, I'm a good resident, I'm, I don't cause trouble and I do all the good, maybe not at the scale that your good company does, but why, why they have however many billions of dollars in this international corporation, why should they get it and me, little resident, not? And just to kind of add a little color to that, just so you can appreciate where those kinds of opinions are coming from, I was just looking at, this is public information, I'm sure you're aware of it, the appraisal summary card for, I think there's several properties, but just one of them. This is the Nine Goddard Road.
Right.
And I'm looking at the assessed value from 2016 up to 2025. And it's about $19 million from 2016 to 21 and a half for this year, which I did a quick calculation, and over that 10-year period, that's a 13% increase in the appraised value for that property. I looked at my thing and it was 50% increase over that same thing. And I think that's a general average for most residents. So the residents in Northborough were saying, you know, let's, let's just take out of the equation the variable of tax rate and let's just talk about appraised value that we're being taxed on. Because we're single rate, at least for now. The residents are saying, well, gee, I'm, my valuation that I've been taxed on has increased 50%, even though it's the same house, I've lived in this house 10 years, I haven't improved it, I haven't done anything to it, it's depreciating, it's falling apart, it's doing the same things at a smaller scale that these big buildings are doing. And yet, there's only increased 13%. I'm not suggesting anything wrong or nefarious that, like, I trust our assessor's office is using the appropriate methodology, but that's just another piece of color to how our residents feel like, well, gee, why, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be good partners. And I speak for myself, want to continue to have the signal to your team and to the folks you report to that we are good partners, we are supportive, we do want you here. And I'm hoping we'll be able to reach something where you can say, yeah, there's some support here. Maybe not our dream scenario, but somewhere in between zero and your dream scenario is my hope. But then that, but I have to be able to be accountable toward those residents who are saying, gee, mine's going up, 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 and you're just, they're not paying their fair share, you know? So I would like you to comment on that so I can have some.
So I can actually tell you that there are communities in the state of Massachusetts where there is business, industry in particular, and some communities there aren't. And if you look at the tax rates and the assessed valuation in those communities when there's no industry, it's way higher, way higher. So to say that there's not a correlation or that there, but that the, there's a disproportionate impact on the residences as a result of the business, it's an oversimplification of what's going on out there. I also know I've heard the terms over the years, corporate welfare. Okay, corporate welfare. What I can tell you was back in 2006, 2007, when I was doing some of these things with steel mills and other operations, yeah, there's no question that the tax abatements and the economic incentives were what I call the icing on the cake, okay? You know, the cake is the basic ingredient, the icing on the cake. That changed, that dynamic changed after 2009. And it changed again dramatically with COVID. It changed again when all the steel prices started going up unpredictably, the cement prices started going up unpredictably. So it's to a point now where most businesses will tell you, I don't have a problem being able to predict my cost of equipment, I've bought it hundreds of hundreds of times. My building costs, on the other hand, are a big challenge because you get a quote for steel, it's good for 24 hours. You get a, you know, the cement cost, well, depends on whether, you know, what's going on behind the scenes. But again, those costs have escalated, even wood prices have gone up and down and up and down and up. So the dynamic is that while there was a point in time that I would agree with you back in the beginning days, that it was, I won't call it a luxury, but it was a, I'll call it a surplus. That's not true anymore. That because of these projects that come in, where they say to them, you know, guys, well, we quoted your project last year and it was, you know, for this particular warehouse distribution operation, it was $50 million. Oh, I'm sorry, it's now $75 million and it's only six months later. You know, it's, so it's, it's a very difficult dynamic to manage, especially when you have an obligation to whoever your parent is and not have some, and what I call it now, it's the wiggle room. It's the thing in there that tells corporate, no, it's going to be okay. There's going to be some ability to be able here, because I can tell you there are situations where I've seen out in Midwest states, projects get started and you end up with a steel frame because those costs doubled and tripled. So what we're doing in this discussion is we're saying, okay, we don't want to put risk on your back. That's number one. Number two, we got to be fair about this so that you've got some way of knowing what that future's going to look like. But we've got to also help, you know, this group to be a success. And how are we going to do that? Well, they're going to do as much as they possibly can, they're very stringent about the way that they go through their budgeting process. On top of that, we're going to help them out a little bit on the cash flow side. And that's basically what it is.
Thank you.
But did that answer you? I think, I think talking to the tax assessor will also help us understand why residences might have, you know, their valuation might have increased by.
I can make a guess, it's because it's market-based for residents and market's much more fluctuating and you have more comps for residents, you don't have a comp for your property. That's probably the main driver of the difference. So I understand there's explanations to it, that doesn't, explanations don't help the visceral reaction of a resident who's feeling the way they feel, you know?
And I do appreciate points and we do have a single tax rate, some towns don't. So there are these pros and cons. And the steel industry of Pittsburgh, I get your analogy, but tend to be more in life sciences here in Massachusetts and tend to be in more high-growth parts of the market. But even like, you know, when I think about the company and the financial position it's in, like, it seems very reasonable to go and continue to invest in the site that you've declared as Innovation Center. And just, I mean, just really impressed by the financials as I pull up the publicly traded, the financials St. Caban are just, I mean, they're, I'm envious, like, I don't see a lot of companies growing their income by 10%. And despite the economic environment you've described, St. Caban's figured out how to be very successful and do that. I did have one question, though, as I was researching this, just to get more educated. And full acknowledgement, I was not on the select board on this first time around, so I'm a little behind. But what I didn't, can you just, can you shed some light on Meramec? Like, what happened, what's going on in Meramec with sort of a shutdown of a site and some of the issues with the tonnage? And I just want to get a better understanding of that.
For the Meramec facility?
I'm not sure that I can address that, I have to talk with media relations.
Yeah, I'm not too sure I'm kind of educated to really address the issue.
I only know what's on the internet.
Yeah.
But this site is different than that site, right?
This site's an R and D site, that was a manufacturing site.
This is not a manufacturing site, this is an R and D.
It's not R and D, you don't have to worry about contamination, like, we're.
No, we're very stringent on, we're very stringent on E H and S.
So I'm glad we feel, I mean, we trust you, we feel some comfort there, too. So, but.
But you know what, we'd be happy to put media relations in touch with you if you want to get some.
No, I think publicly, I think public information is the best I get from them.
You have to be a little careful because, you know, as well as I do, like, it's with your resident that's unhappy, you know, you can get somebody.
I don't, and I have a lot of respect for St. Caban and what they do. So that's not even, that's not, I just more, just to get a better understanding, I didn't, I know if there's anything other than what I could find on the internet.
You know, for Northborough, we're pretty stringent on E H and S. We have safety and health days and environmental conscious days. So we're very stringent on our policies, our SOPs, how we handle materials, how we handle the lab environment, okay? So we have a really strong, I would say, top-class safety team. So it's part of our core.
For those listening, could you just, E H and S?
Environmental health and safety, right? So we have a team of like four to five people that focus just on that for the R and D site. And we follow all the guidelines for the town, et cetera.
Any other questions or comments? So just to oversimplify things, because the question of, that these, that my fellow board members have asked, why, why would a company as successful as St. Caban need a TIF? There, when, there are many entities that are vying for a certain amount of money that the company has. And as, in order to get the money from corporate, you have to show some, some agreement or arrangement with the town so that it makes your application look stronger.
Desirable.
Right, okay, all right. And the second thing is, the TIF only will be for property tax, we'll still get.
No property tax, yes.
Personal property and payroll.
Yes.
Yes, okay. That is, I'm sure, oversimplifying, but I think, I think those are the big questions out there. Any other comments?
Can I ask just like a, maybe I'm just a Massachusetts newbie kind of question? What tax does the town get based on payroll?
What percent?
Jason, do you know?
Okay.
It is zero, right?
Okay, I was just like, maybe I'm missing something.
The, the impact of payroll is that they spend money.
It's people having money.
It's people having money buying homes, people having money buying stuff.
That's what I thought, but I was wanting to make sure I wasn't missing some percentage of some percentage of the town gets, because.
The local income tax yet in Massachusetts.
Let's not even say that. Okay, but, but the idea is people proximal to Northborough, even though maybe not as many live here as we'd like, but they're going in and out of Northborough with good paychecks with your, being employed by a good company. That's the idea, right?
Yeah, and they're stopping at the local grocery store, they're stopping at the drugstore, they're stopping at wherever happens to be to buy whatever they need to buy on the way home or to wherever.
And some of the restaurants, you know, our food and good restaurants.
I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but one of the things I think we're missing in this conversation is that your company has provided the world with some pretty interesting products. It's, so.
We're quite diverse in our portfolio. From construction products all the way to life sciences, so we're quite active across many segments. We're quite active in the state of Massachusetts.
And we would truly appreciate your support. You know, it's, there was some precedence for something like this back in 2018 before, and COVID hit and everything else changed and an interesting dynamic. But it speaks volumes of the relationship that the community has with the company. When, because they're not going to know necessarily who all the players are in the community. What they are going to understand is this community stepped up and provided some economic assistance. And that's, that's partly what they're going to be seeing and viewing.
I can add one more, just be sure in your application to the higher-ups, I think we were put number one safest community in Massachusetts recently. They should know that over there, that's a good thing.
It's a quality of life thing, yes, absolutely.
What is the Q3 milestone that's coming up?
So we're looking to get through our 6% design, which were more basically estimated cost on engineering, and then we'll go back for another approval with our.
And you'll review the whole model at that point, all the costs of the model.
Yes, we're including the tax incentives as well, agreed. And that's why we want it as part of that, because it will, it will impact the approval process and impact how much CapEx I'm allotted. It does have a direct impact.
I understand faster is better, but is there a drop dead date for an agreement for you guys? Or if you could urge us to reach a conclusion by a certain time?
I'm moving towards a mid-Q3 timeframe to continue the process.
When it would be all agreed upon, if we, if we can have something, say, by September, that where we've worked out the details, that would be extremely helpful.
Who is the approver?
I'm sorry?
Who is the approver? Is it the CEO or?
So the CEO of St. Caban North America, the CFO of St. Caban North America, and then my boss, the Chief Innovation Officer, and then the CEO of St. Caban. So I've never, stakeholders, yes. At this level of CapEx, it goes to the CEO of St. Caban. And in St. Caban, you know, we are doing well as a company. I think we're proud of everything we do as a company overall. But we are investing globally as well. So there are, there is quite a competition for CapEx across manufacturing, not only North America, US, Canada, and the globe and other countries. So there is a really detailed process on how they hand out cash. So, and my return on investment, I'm funding a cost center for, you know, 10, 15-year, 20-year return on investment. That's really research, right?
So good news, you get R and D tax credits and there's a lot of benefit from being an innovation center like yourself. So there is, it is an attractive thing, I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, same.
We have a public comment? Don? Oh, is that Don?
Hi, Murphy, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Don.
Hi. I just wanted to point out too, and Todd, maybe you can elaborate as well. We have competed to get the, the site renovated several times in the past, along with, you know, against other CapEx requests. And we've gotten further this time than we have in the past because we are working with you and because we have the support of Todd and Leslie. So in the past, we did not get the funds to renovate the building. So it really is.
Yes.
A competition for these funds. I wanted to make sure that that's clear, number one. And number two, I just wanted to point out too that we appreciate you working with us and we are hoping that we can renovate the center because it will bring the value from, you know, taxation of that $307 million up to $1.7 million a year. So I do see it as a win-win.
We'll go back to 307 million.
7,000, sorry.
Hey, it was a good number, Don. You got everybody's attention immediately.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This, and I hope my questions didn't feel like, they're seeking to understand. Like, none of this is like, I do have a lot of respect for the company does and I have a lot of respect. So like, this is, and candidly, I put on my corporate hat and I just say, wow, would a million dollars make a difference or not in my company? I won't answer it publicly because people can figure out work, but.
So again, just in the final answer, what you're doing is you'd be participating in the upside potential. The, as Don's pointed out, we've tried in the past to get some things passed. And there was actually a five-year TIF that was offered, it didn't fly. And so what we're, she's still, oh, she's gone, okay. So what we're back at the table trying to say, okay, you know, we need, we've got a bigger investment number, we also need a bigger number to show to corporate, this is why we're having this discussion. We hope you appreciate the fact that we're definitely trying to be good members here. We're really trying to help out. we're really trying to help out. Yes.
Manager, could I have one more? This is kind of a technical question, and I don't know if you'll know the answer or be able to give it to me, but as we look closely at the model, and as we get maybe some more comments from our assessor's office about forecasts and things, I'm thinking to myself, well, are you looking at a, I'm, sorry, I'm having trouble forming this question. Obviously, there's a dollar amount of savings over a period of time, and let's say that I don't like the steep drop-off, and I want to soften that, but perhaps am able to, I'm just one person here, and I'm not saying, this is hypothetical, if I'm, if, if, if we could soften that and get the same overall value, what kind of discount rate are you using, or are you able to share that with me, in terms of if we're pushing some of your savings out further, you're going to discount it, obviously, or maybe you're not? That's kind of what my question is, is as we're looking at the math, what kind of discounting should we be thinking of for pushing things out?
Okay, but remember, this is just a hypothetical model.
I understand that we're talking hypothetical.
And the number came out to probably 13 million over 15 years. Now, as we all know, you can have a line like this, and you can tilt that so that it's like this, and you can change the time, so if you want to make it, you know, a longer time period with a lower percentage, or do you want to make it a, a shorter time period with a higher percentage for a number of years? Those are all variables that you can put into the model and start impacting with the idea that maybe you can come up with close to the same set of numbers.
So that's all negotiable?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the, the cash, the revenue is 13 million?
That was just based on that model, that was just based on that model.
That's not the net present value, that's not the discounted cash flow, that's the total, that's the total revenue.
Cumulative, cumulative.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we did it on a basis of 100.
Million.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, so if the, if the assessor says, then it's really, if you start out with 100 million, but it's really a valuation of maybe five, we didn't know what to peg, because I couldn't get, if you, if you talk to people about trying to lease space for R&amp;D centers, they've been doing this, it's not available, so it's almost infinitely expensive. Okay, well, that doesn't make any sense either. So, so we were trying to play around, we thought, forget all this, we're not going to be very good at protecting this, let us just go ahead and start with this model, get something on a piece of paper, so now you can look at it and go, I like that, no, I don't like that, you know?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, I understand we're talking concepts, not exactly dollars and cents, but I'm just going to get a feel for how, would it, would it be a no-go if I suggested, yeah, let's push some of your tax savings further out, meaning more taxes for us earlier, or because of the way you're discounting future savings, is that going to not fly for you guys? And it sounds to me like you're talking more general cumulative values, or a sales point, maybe I shouldn't be so concerned about discount rates, in other words.
Yeah, just, you know, you're, you're going to get to a point where you're going to say, okay, I think I can sell this to the public, and be comfortable with it.
That's what I'm, and that's what I'm, you know, looking at, again, as you say, fair, what, you know, everyone's view of what's fair is going to be different, and we want to make sure we're, we've obviously, the town meeting told us to enter this negotiation, so we've got that support, but they didn't tell us what the outcome should be, so...
I think once you see the graph, though, it, it will sit better with you, and then we could work at massaging the, you know, extreme tilt, yeah.
So I'd, I'd like to take questions or comments from the public, if there are any, either remotely or in the room? Nope, okay, all right. So, at this point, there is no vote. The, the board will take all of this information under advisement, and we will review until there is more, more of a formal action. So, the next steps, as identified by town staff, is that we will include review by town staff and council, potential future executive sessions for negotiation, additional public meetings as needed. We'll keep the public informed as the process moves forward, they will know every meeting that we have, and just want to say thank you, good to see you again, and...
Yes, thank you.
We'll obviously be in touch, and hopefully get this done by September.
Yes, that was your goal, okay, your dead stop date.
And thank you for having us as well, in opening discussion.
I have a quick question. This, we negotiate this because it was already voted on at town meeting, it won't go back again, so we won't have to wait for that.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch.
All right, so, next on the agenda is the White Cliffs Award of Lease under Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, and I can formally announce that Elegant Banquet has been selected as the most advantageous proposer, based on the evaluation of the response to the request for proposals, including both the evaluation criteria and financial proposal, and that is based on the, the questions that we all had to answer, and that went to Stephanie for kind of collating all the, all the responses, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So, we did receive some financial statements from them, financial proposals, and bottom line, I guess it's, it's clear that they will be investing a total of $12 million in the property, and we will then be, correct me if I'm wrong, negotiating the lease and the particulars of that. Any other highlights from the financials that you'd like to?
Yes, so out of the 12 million that you just discussed, they are looking for somehow us to get to $1 million in contribution, whether it be grants, or CPC funding, or whatnot.
But that's a one-time thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, one-time thing.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think, I don't know if this is something, because it's a historic building with development, would Mass Cultural Council have grants available to help, because it's a real estate location?
They possibly would, and, and then there's also the tax credits that they could get through Mass Historic.
Okay.
Yep, so that's great. There's some interesting things I've been finding out about that, for instance, to get, to receive these tax credits, it's typically a 45-year lease.
Oh, my.
Which is, I know, I spoke with, what, what is his name?
I didn't mean to interrupt you on that, I'm sorry.
No, no, Albert Rex, Albert Rex, he's principal in historic tax credits, so, yeah, he, he was telling me that, and I, that was something that was new to me, I didn't realize that, but there's, there's different ways we can work with them in order to, you know, benefit them monetarily-wise, whether it's those historic tax credits, or, or historical grants that they have to preserve the property, then there's grants through Mass Development, the Business Office, which can help them with even, it wouldn't be any renovating costs, but it could be like an elevator or internal infrastructure that they need, so we can help them with that as well.
And Stephanie, that, that million dollars, was that tied to a timeframe, or could that be...
No, it wasn't, and that could be part of the agreement, and it was dubbed in grants, so they're not, you know, asking us to just come up with $1 million, but I guess good faith effort on behalf of our staff, helping them with grants, helping them with, you know, the application process.
Right.
Because we would be owner.
Right, well, I think, yeah, I mean, some of the projections from CPC with no proposals was to put large sums of money...
Yep.
Into it, significant sums of money over the course of a number of years.
Right, so that could be included in our, our contribution.
It wasn't like, you need a million dollars our first year.
Right, no, 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 and that's...
Sorry, I apologize, I'm coming up to speed a little bit. Was the million, was the million dollars presented when we, that they needed a million dollars in Northborough, when we were, when they presented to us, on the 23rd?
Yeah, I remember that they mentioned that.
Yeah.
I didn't remember.
Well, the financials were supposed to be sealed, right?
They, they were, so, which is why it wasn't focused, Nikki's Garden put their pricing into the RFP, and we spoke to town council about that, town council said, I mean, they, they put it in, it's fine, it's, you know, they, basically, it's like a card game, they showed their cards, and, but, yeah, so, so I think they did make reference to it, whatever help we could get up to a million dollars in, in grants, or, you know, gestures from the town, any contribution that we could give them to help cut that number down.
I had, I had interpreted, and I hadn't seen, I interpreted as gestures by the town to support them in their pursuit of grants, not the town obligating the difference between what was granted versus if there was a gap between the million dollars and any grant value.
Well, I mean, within their pricing proposal, they did stipulate 1,000, $1 million.
Was that unsealed, or was that available on the 23rd when we met?
No, that wasn't.
Okay, so there's one...
So after we conducted our evaluation first, that technical portion, it, because it's supposed to be unbiased, so you're able to see the, the proposal from the entity of, you know, what we stipulated as our criteria for this type of building, so we wanted a little bit of, you know, we were worried about our economic growth, we were worried about financial stability, we were worried about, you know, the public having access or complementing our goals of the master plan, and, you know, being contiguous in nature to downtown, and, and we are, I mean, it's only right up the street, so it's, it's a good entity to have, but...
So I was just going to say, I mean, really realistically, I mean, even had we known that, realistically, and not to be crass about it, I mean, there was one serious proposal that came in front of us.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the, the, the other group...
It was well thought out, they had, you know, they have the backing, they have the experience.
Right, right, I mean, the other group, you know, other procurements and things, you know, would have thrown that out because of the including of the financials and not following the instructions, so we could have, we decided not to, because we only had two respondents, but, I mean, realistically, we got, this is the one strong response that we got, so...
And how is the, sorry?
After you.
How is the 40 years determined on, on the lease term versus the 10-year renewal rights, the two renewals?
Well, that's all up for negotiation.
No, but, but did we give guidance, or did that come just based on the open RF?
So, that was, that was part of their ask, is at least 40 years, and then two 10-year possible extensions, yeah.
And what, what I learned at that meeting, and I'd want to check it, is that if you do enter a lease, that's 27 years or more, they treat it as if they own it, which is a higher assessed value than if you do lease something, that's my understanding.
Right.
But I'd want the assessment to weigh in, I'd also want the assessment to weigh in on what the tax revenue would be, but some of this, I guess a question for the board, is should we have some of these conversations in executive session, as we're talking about negotiation?
Yes. Oh, most definitely, and that's, that's what we will be doing.
I was a little uncomfortable with the wording on they were awarded, because the town does have a best alternative.
According to bid.
The bid?
Yes.
Yeah, so they were awarded, but we could choose.
But it was contingent on, like, her motion, you're going to vote on it tonight, so it's contingent upon a satisfied agreement, the historic preservation restriction, any land agreements, if they, you know, decide to develop the land, all of that goes into it, so it's within the motion, in town meeting, of course.
And just to finish my point, I'll shut up, but, but, but like, but the, just to fin, the, all those things are terms and conditions we would negotiate, we're not, there's nothing binding about saying, we're going to go with this, we could choose not to go with it because we determined...
Oh, absolutely, and when we get to town meeting, they, the town could choose to not support it, so, absolutely, yeah.
So basically, tonight, we're, we're voting to move this forward?
Correct, yeah.
Laura?
So it says that the, so, sorry, it says that the, the grants received must be no less than $1 million. What happens if less than, what if they get no grants? Are we liable for a million dollars?
It's, it didn't say that, we could ask that, and it's all part of negotiations, I mean, we could only, half the time, I, we go for several grants, it's probably 50/50 the time where, the times where awarded a grant versus not, so...
But in the agreement, if it says that, that must be, like, there, there's, I'm guessing if they don't get grants, like, we need to figure out what the requirement is there for us.
Yeah, but like John brought up, too, we're, you know, going through CPC to see if we can get the design, the, you know, possible demolition of the addition, so that's all money I think we could use to negotiate, yeah.
Oh, to, to...
Negotiate that 1 million.
Well, and CPC, with the monies approved for the design project to remove the existing ballroom, was going to come back to town meeting and ask for a pretty sizable amount, six, 700,000.
670 or something, yeah.
Right, to, to do that removal, so it's not like, and again, we're not trying to negotiate here in open session, but, I mean, CPC was ready to come and ask for a sizable amount of money, not too far out of the range of what they've got in their proposal.
Right.
Which is just a proposal, it's not what we've negotiated.
Correct, yep, exactly.
I've just got one other question, please. Is the fire, I forgot to ask this at our last meeting, but is it okay, what is the fire chief's thought on the no fire suppression system?
So, I forget the name of the, it's a fire...
Fire prevention engineer.
Okay. Whoever was coughing, I thought the fire chief was there. I was like, well, just tell me. Okay, fire prevention consultant?
Engineer.
Engineer, okay, so they worked with one in Connecticut. Our rules are different in Massachusetts, so our building inspector is going to send them three names of fire protection...
Engineers.
Engineer, and, and they'll go from there. They would have to do that on their own, figure out basically how, in any way, they can maybe put up a double wall between spaces, but it has to be sprinkled in certain areas, but they could do it, I guess the engineering company would come in and check any way that they could alleviate any danger by either the walls, or the, you know, insulation or something, but...
And the fire chief was okay with that?
Oh, he's more than okay with it, yep, because they're experts, they're high-level.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments from the board right now, we have a hand raised. Thanks. Hi, Scott.
Hey, good evening, Scott Rogers, 26 Tomahawk Drive, Chair appropriations, can the pricing proposal be made available to the appropriations committee?
Yep, absolutely, I can send that to you.
Thank you so much.
And I'll send it to financial as well.
Are there...
Planning.
Yep.
Tom, there's, I have a comment, but we can go to there first.
Okay, thanks. Tom, Tom, do you want to unmute yourself and tell us your, what's on your mind?
Yes, my name is Tom Riordan, 7 Sunset Drive. I'm currently a member of the Historic District Commission in Northborough. I strongly endorse working with Elegant Banquet. I do think that the recommendation to talk with some fire consultants about how to use the historic structure exemptions in the IABC code would be very helpful. It is ultimately the decision of the fire chief and the building commissioner, how to achieve that exemption to not have to have a fire suppression system. Stephanie mentioned double walls, what often happens is you might have to construct a two- or three-hour wall, and you treat them as separate buildings with different uses, but that has to be looked at carefully, and it's one of the trickiest issues that has to be addressed. The other comment I had is about the ballroom addition. I know it's just a concept, but I don't think what they presented architecturally is appropriate, being attached to this very eclectic Victorian structure, but I know that's way down the road if all the approvals are done, but restoring the existing building, removing all the 60, 70 additions, is something that we've been urging for years, and in their preliminary sketches, they were showing portions of that, those additions remaining, especially on the, the west side, connecting up to the proposed ballroom. So, those are my concerns, I hope you move forward with this proposal, and it would be a wonderful renovation improvement to the town. Thank you.
It should be noted that Tom is a, is a, is an architect, he's had a lot of experience, he was on the White Cliffs Committee. Is there, Tom, I don't know if he's... he was on the White Cliffs Committee, is there, Tom, I don't know if he's gone, but maybe if he could email his concerns, that, you know, the comment about.
I wrote it down, the historic exemptions for the fire suppression.
So we'll bring that up to their architect?
Yeah, yep, we could, or I could actually just look into it, I could call the Historic Commission and see if, what the laws are about that.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if we would have to be on the National Register and.
Well, we have to have some kind of, I think we have a knowledgeable person in the audience.
Oh, there he is, there he is.
Norm.
Who can help us.
Norm Corbin, 35 Whitney Street. There are two topics you have to always keep separate, there's the preservation restriction, which is what's required because it's CPA funded, that's one topic, the other topic is the National Register, they're handled both by Mass Historical Commission, but they are different topics. If you want any tax credits, you need to be on the National Register, and the National Register from experience is, they're buried with work and it's very delayed, so contacting Mass Historical Commission and say, give us a heads up how we would get on the National Register is key, there's several steps to the process and we haven't started that yet.
Norm, if we got a deed restriction that was not that we're on the National Register, can you apply for that later? Can you have an historic deed restriction and then apply for National?
Those are good questions that Mass Historical Commission would answer, it comes down to when, I don't, what I don't know, and this fellow, Albert Rex, would know, is how the timing needs to work, what I don't have an appreciation for is when do you start to get the tax exemptions, and when they calculated out the tax exemptions for, when we had the Metro West proposal, it was 2.4 million dollars in federal and state taxes, so there's some real money to be had there, so, but just keep in mind, National Register is one process, the historic preservation is a separate process, both go through the Massachusetts Historical Commission, both go through the same department that is buried, so let's, the heads up on that.
Okay, yep, I have those two questions.
And who's the staff person who will?
Michael Steinitz from MHC.
Oh, okay, and you're gonna be the liaison to this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, any other questions or comments? Jacob?
I, I remember a part of the presentation where even though they showed on their map the existing one on there, I think the explanation they gave us, and this is to one of the comments a second ago, I think that the explanation they gave us was they left that there for context, but not that the structure would stay there, I think they told us, and we can obviously verify.
Right, it matched their, that building.
That they were going to completely remove that, which is what the town was wanting to do anyway, and the second little detail that I remember from the presentation was that it was actually going to be separated, by how much, I don't know, and how the conduit from one to the other, there's obviously gonna be a passageway, that people are gonna be able to go through without being exposed to rain or whatever weather, never rains on weddings, that's right, but I remember them saying and being specific about it being separate, that may just, I don't know how that works as far as architecture goes, but they did say that. Anyway, for today's discussion, I think if I can summarize, I think it was said, the moving to the next step, as between the two proposals with the Elegant Banquetts proposal, I think everyone agrees, it wasn't based on any part of any financial proposal anyway, right, Stephanie?
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, and do I understand correctly now that as to their financial proposal, it's, things are negotiable, right?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
But I think those are the main takeaways for me. Thank you. Oh, and I do want to point out, one of the, the proposal I'm sure will be made available, they do want to have real estate taxes abated for years one through five, so that's something that will need to be talked about in detail.
Yep, so.
Among other things.
Right, Mass General Law allows us to ask for real property taxes, and some towns have done it where they opt for a pilot situation, a payment in lieu of taxes instead of taxing property tax, but, you know, that's under negotiation as well, whatever way we want to go about it. Plus, we would get the personal property tax for our kitchen, you know, within the kitchen, all their equipment and, you know, whatever else, kind of the same situation as St. Cobain.
And we'd be getting meals tax.
Meals tax as well, yep.
And going back to the addition, that, that will still have to go before design review, which is a public meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and will all of that be done by the time we go to special town meeting about this, or the, like, the, like some kind of design?
I would, yeah, I would hope so, we're looking at October, so that's why, I know we're at the end of this meeting, we're scheduling, and part of it will have to be executive session schedules too, so we're gonna be really busy.
Okay, all right, so I think, I think for the public, we need to explain that next steps will be executive session to review and negotiate the detailed lease terms, including conditions, protections, and specific obligations, town council will draft a proposed agreement, which will be shared with Elegant Banquetts, for review and revision, the parties will work collaboratively until mutually acceptable terms are reached, once that happens, the final lease agreement will be presented at special town meeting for approval by the voters, no final execution of the lease will occur until after successful town meeting approval and any required open sessions of the board. So, any other questions, comments?
No, and then you just have to, there's a motion on there.
Right, yes. And just to be clear, the vote is under, like, negotiations of lease, we can talk about what if we don't come up with a million dollars in grants?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, so, would someone like to offer a motion?
I would, and I want to make clear, as we talked about earlier, when I say award in this motion, it's in the context we've just talked about, that for the bid process, as between the two, that's what we.
Correct, yep.
Not that there's a guarantee of any particular terms.
Right.
Okay, so I move that the select board vote to award the lease of White Cliffs to Elegant Banquetts LLC, subject to negotiations of lease, land development agreement, a historic preservation restriction, and town meeting vote.
Second. Tie. Tie. Okay, motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura and Mike, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, so we will move forward on that. Excellent. All right. Next, does anyone need a quick paper we want to plow through?
Or to add?
Okay.
Maybe after this one, we'll do.
Okay, all right, okay, good, yes, okay, so Traffic Safety Committee has a recommendation for us. Hi.
Hello. Hi, Madam Chair, I'm back, Scott Shepard, Public Works Director.
I thought we did this already, did we do this one already?
We keep doing them over and over again, there's a lot of them, so we have another truck exclusion to discuss before you, I have Josh Van Hooten, our Assistant DPW Director, he's a PE, comes to us from Westboro through our hidden corridor of staff transitions, been here for quite a while and he's acclimated very well, so, and he's our liaison, staff liaison to the Traffic Safety Committee.
Thank you.
All you.
So thanks for having me here, here to discuss the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Lincoln Street and Pleasant Street, this process started back in 2024, some residents were concerned about the heavy vehicle traffic out there, the town engaged with Weston and Sampson, our consultant engineering firm, for traffic, they performed a traffic study and traffic counts, as well as prepared a report looking into the de-viability of a heavy vehicle, heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on those two streets, so they prepared a report, we reviewed it, we took it to the Traffic Safety Committee, they also reviewed it, we discussed it at our April meeting, and there was unanimous vote to move forward and recommend that we approve the heavy commercial vehicle traffic exclusion on Lincoln Street and Pleasant Street.
So the, the original request was for Lincoln Street alone, from some residents, when we engaged Weston and Sampson to do their work, it's pretty obvious that Pleasant Street should be included with it, anybody comes off of Church Street or wants to go to 290 from West Main, hit it in your GPS, and it's gonna send you right up Lincoln and Pleasant Street. It was an issue years ago and we would have friendly conversations with our neighbors, some of the trucking companies, well, it's a lot more than that now with some of our commerce we have in town, so the traffic, the counts came in, they were good, so the process is odd, I know we have some new board members, so it's pretty convoluted. We get the request for, to consider it, we do the traffic counts, an engineering study is prepared, it now goes to the Traffic Safety Committee, they make a recommendation to this body, this body approves the request to Mass DOT, for Mass DOT to approve the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, so what we do is we write a letter after your vote, identifying what the vote is, as certified by the clerk, DOT gets it, we ask DOT, can we have a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, they send a letter saying yes, your select board is allowed to adopt a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, then we come back before you again, and you adopt the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, and then we go to DOT and we tell them you've done that, and then they come back to us and say we can put up signs.
Wow.
Quick process.
Yeah.
Even though it's your road and you run it, that's how they want us to do it, so, anyway, this is one of the steps.
I really appreciate the work and all those steps, it's really scary to watch those big trucks go by the school, so I hope the sooner we can get this in place, the better.
Excellent.
Thanks for all this information and the work for the Traffic Safety Committee as well.
Thank you.
So why, what's the alternative route, there always has to be an alternative route, right?
The alternative route would be to continue down Route 20, West Main Street to Church Street, and that will bring you right back around, it's a little bit longer, but we believe it's a lot safer for everyone in the neighborhoods, it's residential neighborhoods with two schools out there, so.
And that Pleasant Street turn is pretty precarious also.
And then the traffic at that street, like on Lincoln at parent pickup time and the kids with their bikes, it's, it's very nerve wracking, so.
And to your comment that there's more and more trucks on the road, it's, you know, we have to do what we can do. Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Can I just, quick question, sorry, this is the new news factor, what is heavy vehicles, is that a gross weight, is that axle count, is that 16,000, like, what is a heavy vehicle for this purpose?
So it would be anything considered a class V vehicle, that'd be anything that could carry over two and a half tons and up, so, some two-wheel trucks, you know, put two wheels in the back, they carry that, but also six-wheel, 18-wheelers, 10-wheelers, things like that, so.
And obviously if they had business in the area and not passing through, that they're not excluded.
Yes.
Right, yep. Thanks.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Thanks for the motion, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to support the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion for Lincoln and Pleasant Streets as presented in the DPW Director's April 8, 2025 memo.
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Mike, is there any other discussion?
No, 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 sorry.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it was nice to meet you all.
Okay, so now we, we will be entering the joint meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to maybe take a.
Three-minute break?
Three-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be off for three minutes? Okay. Okay. Thanks for that, Michael.
Thank you so much, I'm gonna run to the bathroom quickly.
Yeah.
Oh, nobody needs to.[1459.13]
Oh, nobody needs to. All set? And so, do we have, I think, Scott Rogers?
Scott and Jeff Knight, who we can pull in.
How many people do we have from Appropriations?
We'll have five with the three remote members.
Three remote members, okay. So, this is a joint session with the Select Board and Appropriations Committee, and I'll call to order the, our section, the Select Board. We're all here in person, so our votes will be by hand. And Scott, do you want to call to, call to order your meeting, part of the meeting?
Yes, thank you. And I don't have the full script for remote meetings, but this is all being done in accordance with the Appropriations Committee meeting of July 14. We'll, we'll call the members to make sure everybody can hear and be heard. George Brinkel?
Here.
Terry Halloran?
Here.
And I cannot see participants, so Tim Kalin?
Here.
Jeff Knight?
Here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, I guess we can turn the meeting over to Jason Little?
Madam Chair, I'm pretty sure Chair Rogers was, wanted to say that his meeting's being recorded also, just for the record, right?
I heard it.
Okay. Your meeting's being recorded, right? Yes.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure we eliminate any technicalities.
Thank you.
I was just trying to make it so that Julian didn't have to pull the script from the desk.
Thanks for having us here tonight. There's a memo in your packet regarding the year-end transfers, and to eliminate any suspense, the only one that's been identified so far is for Town Council. We estimated a little short in June for how much to calculate that transfer to be. We got our final bill from KP Law for the fiscal year, not our final bill, but our final bill for the fiscal year, and we're over budget by $3,300. So, in order to pay that bill, we need to effectuate this, this transfer. And again, I left the suspense in the memo so that in case anything else was identified. At this point, we haven't paid all our bills yet for FY '25. Tomorrow's our due date to have them turned in from departments, so if something else comes up and it causes a deficit, we'd have to go to special town meeting. That's what's called the unpaid bill scenario, so we'd have to go and get either special town meeting or wait till town, annual town meeting in order to pay the bill to get in a special appropriation to pay for the overage. So, that concludes my presentation on this item.
That was amazing.
Thank you.
Jason, how much did we spend with Town Council in the fiscal year?
We had special counsel for Labor Council, so it's not just KP Law alone, but from the general fund appropriation, it's $113,000.
You spent it in total legal fees or with?
No, just from the town appropriation. I should explain, when, when we get these legal bills on a monthly basis, it lists out what, what matter that the attorney's working on, and anything that's related to something else beyond the general fund, I make sure those funds are paying those charges. So, one example would be work that's done on the fire station project, we would charge that to the fire station project itself, or work that's effectuated on behalf of the CPA, that would likely be charged from the admin fund from the CPA. So, if that answers your question, this is what the general fund would be, general council bills would be, we'd be exposed to.
How much do we spend in total with the firm in the fiscal year?
I don't have that information, John. I can, I can get that.
I'm just curious. I'm learning numbers, trying to see how much that costs.
Yeah, the, the majority of it is general council charges, so this is the majority of what we've paid KP Law this year. And again, I should go back to a, a big, a big expense was that Marlboro case, so we did charge a lot to, in prior years, to the sewer fund related to that. So, that outweighed the general fund's share that, that year, but, or those years, but most of it is the general fund that, that pays KP Law's bills.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from our board? Scott, do you want to ask?
Any questions or comments from the Appropriations?
Okay, then, we have motions from both boards. No.
Yep.
Right. Let's do, Scott, are you okay if, if the Select Board, does their motion and vote?
Absolutely, because it's stated that we concur, so, yeah, please go first.
Right. Okay.
All right, so I won't leave us in suspense any longer. I move the Select Board vote to approve the transfer request of $3,300 from health insurance to the Town Council appropriation as presented in the Finance Director's July 10, 2025 memo pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B.
I just have to get clarification. Can I second it and then ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, I'm second. I'll second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion?
Okay. I just noticed that this is coming from health insurance. Is that because it was legal counsel that was related to?
That, that's simply the source where we know we have some surplus.
Okay. Didn't need to match the way that the other?
No, I, I think our other transfer, we did, we transferred, at our June 9 meeting that we met, we transferred, we exhausted the Appropriations Reserve Fund.
Okay.
And then the balance of the transfers were funded from health insurance.
Got it.
Because we, we knew that we had a small amount of surplus in that line.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, motion was made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion, anybody? Okay, then, all in favor, raise your hand. Our, our board votes unanimously.
And is there a motion from the Appropriations Committee?
I move the Appropriations Committee concur with the Select Board and approve the transfer request of $3,300 from health insurance to the Town Council appropriation pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B.
Second.
Thanks, George. Who was the second?
Terry.
Thanks, Terry. This will be a rule call vote. All those in favor, or, George?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Scott's an aye as well. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. And then next we have?
All right, so, the, the next bullet point on this agenda item is, I mean, it's financial nature of appropriations, it's invited to, to stay for this, but there's no action being requested on this item. Simply, I was requested to provide an update on the ARPA projects, and there's a memo in the packet that lists out all of the, the allocations and the current status through June 30 of those, of those projects. So, the important note is that the town received $4.5 million in, in ARPA funding from the federal government. We've met all of our reporting requirements and filed, filed a report, so the, the following pages in this memo list out the status that was reported to U.S. Treasury for all these projects, so it, it's a lengthy table, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Oh, it's amazingly well-done and clear. So, is the government asking you for updates at all, or?
Well, well, we have a reporting requirement. We're required to file annually at, at the level that, that we're at with, with the size of the community, an annual project and expenditure report, and it's, it's kind of an, an odd time period, but we have to report expenditures annually in April through March 31, and we have done that.
December 2026 is the.
Oh, yeah, and December 26. Yeah, thanks.
Which is about a year and a half from now.
Yep.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Thanks for giving us this information. The column that says FY 2025 encumbrances, I think I understand it, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because encumbrance means a lot of different things. That's committed funds we have to those projects that we also have from the ARPA funding, it's just money to be spent is another way of saying that.
Correct. It's either work that's undone or expenditures that haven't been processed yet. What it shows is that all of the, the funds are, because the, the remaining balance is zero, it shows that the funds are obligated under the terms of the federal government, so it's listed here, it's all remaining balance of zero, so that's the, the good news. It means it's fully obligated.
And I appreciate your, and everyone on your team's diligent work on that. I did have one question. I don't really want to get into the itemized details here, but I did see the biggest single unfully completed item here was the LED streetlights. Is there something holding that up or anything we can do to?
I, I don't think there's any procedural step that's holding us up, I think, or I think that project is progressing.
Yeah, and it's going the right now.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just looking at bigger, the bigger items on there. The rest of them I pretty much understand, I think.
Big payments together, yep.
Any other questions from our board? So, so according to this, and I'm going to round up, it looks like we have already spent three, $3.2 million?
Yes.
Out of the 4.5.
Correct.
Not bad.
Yeah.
And so, I just, how often do you think that we should ask for a report on this to make sure that it's, it's all done by 20, December 2026?
Obviously, if there's money remaining in the encumbrance column, not in the expended column, that, that the remaining 1.266 million, it'll get fraught, we'll be pushing, reaching out to departments, but I, I will be doing that, but.
Okay.
I'll, I'll leave it at your discretion when, when you find it helpful to.
Well, as long as someone is, is kind of reminding the groups that, that got money that they, you know, that there is this deadline, a year and a half goes fast.
Yeah, it truly does, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions from Appropriations? Scott, do you want to?
Yeah, let me just ask the members if there are any questions.
Not here.
And then, Jason, would the, the next scheduled report be that April reporting that you do? Would that be an appropriate update for everybody?
I think it would be appropriate, in my view, but.
Kind of another, another memo on a table then?
All right. We can move on to the next item.
All right. Last is another procedural hurdle. We typically approve these advances in lieu of borrowing at the same time we're renewing a ban or, or, you know, issuing debt. We issued a very large bond this year, and that covered everything that we had in short-term debt at that point, so there was no need to come back in June and sign, sign a new ban or sign a new note, so, because we had borrowed for everything that was outstanding. Everything that was outstanding that had expenditures that we needed to borrow money for. There was a number of articles, these two articles from 2024, which is the fire pumper and the Peaslee School feasibility where there were no expenditures, were simply making an entry, but by approving an advance, we're simply putting ourselves on notice that we are, we may need to borrow for these before the end of FY '26. So, there's, there's four articles here, two that were approved at this year's town meeting and two that were approved at last year's. As I said, one was the fire pumper, the Peaslee School feasibility project, a fire department ambulance, and then a water utility bridge, and those totaled $2.8 million.
So, the ones, the two that we just passed recently, I get those. The fire pumper, I kind of think, based on how the chief has explained, I understand the gating item and the delays on, we pay it when the order's ready essentially, right?
Right.
So, what's the gating item or next step on the $900,000 for the Peaslee School feasibility study? I know that obviously the school committee's been formed, I don't know where. What's the next step to where we will know when the, those bills are going to come due? Anyone have an idea?
I, I would imagine that the, an OPM has been appointed by the Building Committee, and I believe the, Steph, you've attended the MSBA meeting where they approved the contract for the, for the OPM.
For the OPM, yep, PMA.
So, those procedural steps have happened, so I believe that there will be forthcoming anytime soon, some, some bills that would come from the, the OPM for the project.
Thanks.
So, to answer the question about the fire pumper, there's a long lead time on public safety equipment. It, it could be multiple years before we get it, and it's Massachusetts General Law, we don't make payments in advance of getting, getting something delivered, so.
And for that.
Yeah, so, because of that, if, if we don't need to borrow for it, we're not going to borrow for it, and.
So, we're reminding ourselves that we've obligated this money. When the bill comes, we may need to borrow that period.
Yeah, so if somebody looks at, if, if we make a journal entry on our books that says that the Capital Project Fund owes the general fund this money, somebody will know to, to borrow for it, say, say I were to be run over by a car or something before the end of the year.
Oh, gosh, that's awful.
Got it. Thank you for the, I appreciate the.
I plan to be here.
Okay, any other questions?
Just on, just clarification, what is the fund that the fire department has that they go into sometimes? Is it revolving fund? Is it? Yeah, they have a, a revolving fund, an ambulance receipts revolving fund, yes.
Yeah.
So, they, if I can guess what your question is, why wouldn't they just loan it to themselves from there? They don't have the entire $550,000 available to, to buy an ambulance at one time, but the debt service of the ambulances are paid in full from that ambulance revolving fund, but just in installments.
And will they, I guess, would there's a mechanism to pay it from that fund back into another fund on the town's budget, or is it just, how does that work?
Well, these aren't being funded really out of the town's budget, it's just setting aside money within the general fund to pay these bills, and they're owed from the Capital Project Fund, and the Capital Project Fund, in this case, of the ambulance, that's paid back from the revolving fund.
Like a reimbursement.
It's like, so over time, this 550 is sort of temporary, over time it's paid back?
Correct, yes. Yeah, we, when we work through the budget, there's, we, we buy an ambulance every three years, so they have three ambulances, we buy one every three years, so a third of the ambulance is provided for within their budget to, from the revolving fund to set money aside to pay down the debt.
Any other questions, comments? Scott, I'll open it up to you.
Any questions from Appropriations?
Okay, then, is there a motion from the Select Board regarding advances in lieu of borrowing?
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board vote to approve and execute advances in lieu of borrowing totaling $2,845,842 as presented in the Finance Director's July 8, 2025 memo pursuant to Massachusetts General Law.
Second. Motion made by John, seconded by Laura. All in favor, please raise your hand. Our, our motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I should add, there's also a set of forms from the Department of Revenue that we'll have to send in to Boston, so I, I'll pass them, pass them around.
We got to sign.
There's four separate forms.
Do we have to sign?
Does Appropriations need to approve this one or no?
No, it's, it's simply the Select Board.
I have other things you need to sign as well.
Madam Chair, is there any other business for the joint meeting of the Select Board and Appropriations Committee? Or Mr. Rogers?
Jason, do you have any other things from the?
No, that, that concludes. No, that concludes this agenda item for me.
Thank you for asking, and let's just make sure that, Scott, do you want to check if you have any other business before we adjourn this portion of the meeting?
Exactly that. Is there any other business from the appropriation members?
Then I will.
None? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move the Appropriations Committee adjourn.
Second.
Was that George and Terry again?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Now, this will be our final roll call vote. George?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Scott's an aye.
Thank you. And we need to adjourn our section.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board adjourn its portion of the joint meeting of the Select Board and Appropriations Committee.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment of this portion? Don't go anywhere. Anamis vote. Okay. Jason, you provided us with a really nice.
Thank you much.
About the capital.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thanks. Thanks for mentioning that. There's no action to be taken on it, but I was requested to provide a listing. I almost forgot about this, but I provide a listing of the existing capital projects that we have and the balances remaining in those projects. So if you look at, if you were to look at that list, you can see from it that we don't have, you know, the comments get made sometimes, maybe there's an old article we can use as a source to transfer money from. We don't have a large collection of old articles. We move through them. It's one of the benefits of having the free cash plan where if an article is funded with free cash, if there's money remaining in it, we can, if it's complete, it can be closed out at the end of a fiscal year, and it becomes part of the next certification of free cash. Whereas if we've borrowed for these things, sometimes like reusing bonded funds comes with another set of restrictions to it, so it's more complicated.
Didn't we do that with the Lincoln Street School for something else?
Yes. Well, the fire land acquisition article transferred money that was surplus from the bonded funds for the Lincoln Street School, and I think it was 1.8 million or something in that neighborhood, somewhere between $1 and $2 million was surplus from the savings in the Lincoln Street project, and that was transferred to the fire project.
So are there any questions on this?
No.
Which one is that? Let me make sure.
This is capital projects of 2025, but it goes from, I think, 20, wow, 2018, 2014?
I mean, Jason, is some of this, the conversation we had about like looking at the HVAC for Town Hall was an example where we had a good guy because we had this money that was there forever?
Yeah, that is true. That's another case of the funding source for that article. Here, let me just flip to the page. The Town Hall project is the first one. It's from, the article is from 2012, and the transfers that formed the $802,000 were a lot of older articles that were bonded funds from before that. So as soon as those funds were transferred to this article in 2012, that project was delayed, so for some time. So there's work being undertaken to do some renovations and repairs to this building here, and this is the source of that, along with, there's a companion article in the CPA to handle the HVAC. And I know we had another article this past year toward repairing HVAC in town buildings.
Right, and we still need to replace the carpets.
Yes. This would be a candidate of where it could be, that could be funded from.
Yeah, where the study was being done for the HVAC, whether or not to replace the units on the roof or to do the mini splits. And we ran into one issue where we're going to have to totally re-insulate this attic. That was brought to our attention. So we're still looking at what cost that will come to, and hopefully we'll have remaining funds to replace the carpet because I.
Be the biggest achievement.
Oh, my God. I seriously cough all the time. I'm not kidding. They're just, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Give Mass Save a call and tell them they have to give us all new insulation for free, right? I mean, we all pay into that. I don't think we are, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, Scott would know that.
That's a good point.
I mean, they came and tried to do a dog and pony show at my house, and then they came out with, like, oh, we don't recommend anything.
They're like, here's a light bulb.
Seriously, and they only replaced like 10% of my light bulbs. I was like, can I get all of them?
They're like, no.
Sorry. Thank you for this. I was the one who requested it, and I wasn't really, I really promise, I wasn't trying to do make work. It just seemed like a housekeeping thing that I kind of just wanted to make sure we're aware of.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's what we're doing.
No, I enjoy the ability to put this together, and we have to look at this information anyway, so it's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate the ability to present to you on it.
So if you want, sorry, yeah, just one question, just looking at like the Town Hall HVAC from 42825, $470,000. Would any of that ever come from Town Hall project from 2012 with a balance of like $700,000?
Well, they would be companions to each other, so I would recommend using the oldest money first. I mean, that, if I were to align financing for a project.
But they're not siloed?
No.
But of pure, like, things that are truly aged, I don't know, make a number up, but say anything prior to '23 or '22, like, besides the Town Hall project with 693, which I understand, you've got like 24 grand in one installation, photography of 58, and then like 67,350, and the Brigham Street well, 162, and Lyman Street well repair. Will all those go back to the town, or how do we deal with those surpluses?
Yeah, so the wide area network installation, that was delayed because of the fire station project. That was the last step of the wide area network, was connecting the new fire when the new fire station was to come online, to connect that to the town's.
Back in 2014.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
They had a very future-looking crystal ball at the time.
So that sort of.
Well, not to cut you off, but the fire station project was being thought of for a long period of time, going back to, I think, before I even worked here, and I think there was the first article in 2006, I think, was the first article that was tapped to start planning it. Before closing this out, I have to get the authorization from the department head that the money was appropriated to. So in the case of the wide area network installation, I've asked the IT director every year, does he still intend to do this? And the answer has been yes. The aerial GIS photography, every 10 years, I think that we contract or will have an article in the capital plan to update the aerial GIS photography. He has said that he's continuing with the $59,000 that's remaining in the original article. So there's work being undertaken there, although it's still sitting on the books. The rest of these are relatively new articles.
What about the, I guess, what about the last page I'm looking at that has the Brigham Street well and the Lyman Street well repair? That's from 2009 and 2012. $67,350, 162, 572, 29.
Yeah, so to answer that question, those were bonded funds, so that's the complication of you have to find a project that has an equal or longer life, and we would want to align it with a water project in that case because it was, the debt was funded from the water fund, so.
So this was funded with debt sitting in an account?
Correct, yes.
Paying an interest rate?
Correct, yeah.
Can we clean these up and then have?
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent, is to repurpose this toward another water project.
It has to be water.
What about the bridge thingy?
The one we just did, the bridge.
No, but couldn't you use some of the old funds for that one? That's water.
Yeah, so what we would have to do is, and again, these are some of these research projects that we have to do. It's, the intent is to go to bond counsel to ask them if the useful life is appropriate to repurpose these projects.
Understood. No, I'm not trying to like, I'm sure you guys are thinking about all the solutions. I'm just like, water project, here's a water project.
Yeah, no, you're not wrong. There's others coming in the capital plan as well, so all is not lost if we can't use it for the utility bridge. There will be more projects coming in the capital plan.
And so, and there's also a nuance here, just from my brain, when I compare like the aerial GIS photography 2018, the fund source for that is free cash, project balance $58,000. Because the funding source of that is free cash, it's fair to say that that $58,000, we're, it's being held sort of in reserve in funds we already have as, and therefore if it's released, that's now funds that's available, as opposed to, correct me if I said anything wrong so far.
No, that sounds correct.
As opposed to, in contrast, I'm looking at one we obviously are all familiar with, the fire station construction, funding source is bond and unissued debt, where it says project balance $11 million. That's not money we are just going to have sitting around that we've actually not even taken debt for the whole scope of the project yet, and the hope is, assuming everyone stays within their bids and we can do a good job of managing that, we won't go through the other $11 million.
Correct, yeah. So the amount that's not issued was $9.8 million.
Right.
So, yeah, so the balance that's not encumbered is $1.3 million. There's a number of different numbers, number of different numbers on this page, but we borrowed $31.5 million, and so we have contracts that cover a lot of that, and the expected cash flow is to move through this year. So the intent was to borrow enough to get us through the cash flow through the end of '26 and into the beginning of '27, so we wouldn't have to incur debt, go out to the market again and borrow again. And again, the amount that's left was $9.9 million, so hopefully it will play out where we don't need to borrow more money, but it can't be guaranteed.
Yeah, and I've heard your previous presentations on those and appreciate that. I'm more, just trying to make sure I'm well-educated enough, because I have a report for the Fire Station Building Committee when we get to reports, but, you know, we have a situation where town meeting authorized 41. something, and bids came in at 35, 36, and I'm just wanting to make sure I'm staying up to speed with where we are on.
Really, we're really careful on the town administration side of doing our best not to borrow too much or borrow too early. And so it was a kind of a fraught time leaning into the borrowing for that project, just because of the.
Volatility in the market.
Volatility of the market, so to speak. And we were working with that 4 and 1/4% estimate for well over a year leading up to that, and when it looked like things were trending higher, we were a little bit sweating that a little bit.
You want to lock it in.
But it came in at 4.35, which is still, it's unusual for us to get a rate that's higher than what the bond experts have recommended using like that far back. But again, it was, it's close enough that it's, all the decisions were made in good faith with those estimates.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
Just one clarification. So which of these ones that are old, do you expect to just be able to go and resolve and get them off the list?
Well, I would anticipate the Town Hall project is going to be ongoing for some time. The 2012 article, and I mean, I think 2024 was the first expenditures from that $802,000, but.
We allocated a lot to HVAC for that, if I recall, right?
Yeah, there's an HVAC component, and again, I think the breakdown back in 2012 was that 350 was going to be for HVAC, and then the 802 was going to be for other renovations within the building. I don't know how much HVAC costs now, but I think there's probably a lot of escalation in those costs.
Yeah, if I remember financial planning, I thought it was almost, we thought the whole thing would just basically be HVAC for like adding the two up that got us to 1 something.
Right. I believe the wide area network installation, that will be, you know, forthcoming probably in the next year.
I guess, can we just clean up anything that's not, like, if they're back to 2014, then just go and have a new request come in through one of our appropriations, the Financial Planning Committee, and have it be clean and just.
I mean, if it's close, like the WAN, the WAN is, we're working with that fiber system right now, so that's something that's close, but I hear you with the other.
If we don't see it happening next 12 months, why don't we just say, okay, that we have the transparency to see the stuff coming in. We're not, we still have the money. We're just putting it somewhere else and starting, like, we're not, I just get, when I see the balances of these things hanging out there, and I love the exercise, just cleaning them up seems to have value from a transparency perspective.
So we have been cleaning them up on an annual basis, and this actually, believed or not, represents a very clean set of capital project books.
Believe me, but I see so few that I'm talking about. I totally agree with that. So none of this is a criticism. It's more just more of a process question.
Yeah, so typically toward the end of the year, this is one of the things that I get passionate about, is making sure we close out as many things as possible that we can through the end of the year. Like, I want to maintain a minimum amount of money that's sitting in different places, not being used. So that's one thing, I drive people crazy going through these accounts and trying to close them out and draw them to a conclusion. So we will continue doing that.
Any other questions? This was really very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Everybody ready to move on?
Yep.
Next on the agenda is discussion of DCAM surplus land, Zero Lyman Street. Basically, the discussion for this is, do we want to, we had a detailed presentation from Amy Perezky at our last meeting and what the planning board intends to do. I believe she said that zoning board is signing on to their letter to DCAM, and I submitted a draft of a letter that we could send independently. Amy helped me with this, with the details and a lot of the wording. So this is what we have to decide tonight. Do we think it's more impactful if we send an additional letter, or do we just want to sign on to?
I think she already sent hers.
Sorry?
I feel like Amy already sent hers to.
No, I think they're discussing it, they're reviewing it tomorrow.
Oh, okay, because I saw her send something to Reina from the state, but, okay, maybe I'm wrong.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Let me just double check, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you, yes.
So I really, I enjoyed both of these letters. What I really liked about this one was just focusing on the need for our town to have starter homes, which has come up routinely, and I think that that was a differentiator between, well, it stood out. And I think that if we did have two letters that came from the town focusing on different needs, I don't think it would be a bad idea, and hopefully it would.
Two letters.
Hopefully.
Oh, good.
But, I mean, if, at the very least, maybe the state will take a closer look at what the towns need and pay attention to it, so.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I mean, I would put the emphasis more on single-family starter home.
Yeah.
Over, I would be for removing duplex and townhouse. I think, you know, I think that's sort of where the need is. I think even if you built smaller, single-family homes, I think you'd sell them. I mean, that's just my layman's opinion. I think a developer could make money on that, given the price of housing. And I think it just helps, helps with the concentration of people and how much we're adding to our resources and services here in town. The more units you pack in, the more kids we got to educate, the more fire, the more police, the more push and pull there is for resources. You know, I want there to be affordable housing, but, you know, there's a lot of towns in Massachusetts that could be doing a lot more. Northborough already does a lot.
So one of the things that I, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, they, we did get information that they will honor our inclusionary bylaw, right?
Well, that was, she just sent this letter to Reina on July 8, and one of the questions was if a town currently has inclusionary zoning bylaw mandating that, you know, 10 or more dwelling units, da, 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 can the developer bypass this according to the state's, you know?
Remember that was our, that our inclusionary bylaw is? Remember that was our, that our inclusionary bylaw is 15%?
I thought it was like 10 plus acres or something.
It's 10 or more dwelling units requires at least 15% units are affordable.
Oh.
So there was some question as to whether a developer could bypass that.
Well, isn't this kind of, the way it was kind of explained, like the state could do whatever it wants. It's just taking what they say under advisement, right?
Right, correct.
They're going to do whatever they want anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
So how do we make the biggest impact? So, so did you clarify?
Well, was, July 18th was the drop dead date, but who were we supposed to send it to? Was it Reina? Because if so, I feel like this might be the letter from planning. She sent it to Reina, Stephen Andrews, Warren Madden.
Well, I mean, they have on tomorrow's agenda for 6:00 PM, discussion of DCAM surplus land in Northborough.
Okay, so, so this, okay, then that answers.
I assume they haven't finalized it.
No, that's, that's a good point.
I thought she said it was the 18th.
So it must be, it must be directly to DCAM. And this, Reina is consulted through DCAM. So she's dealing with the towns, the municipalities and, you know, and then DCAM. But DCAM gave them this, you know, directive, we have surplus land, try to, you know, auction it off or to do what you, you know, must with the municipalities. But I think what Michael said hits the nail on the head is that they can basically do whatever they want.
Of course, I do, I agree with your sentiment. Like, I think like you get starter homes, if you do 20, we could get comfortable that at least 15% were affordable. That would be a nice place to be. The taxes on, on a home versus a duplex or a condo are higher to help with the cost of that. It's a good way to get a family in Northborough, stay, I mean, stay there. It is an awkward spot, I don't know if you guys, I know it really well. I'm there a lot because I take my dog there quite a bit. And it is this little triangle that just backs up to Del Webb. And, but that being said, what I remember last time was, do we have some concern about potentially like water and sewer and like some state infrastructure? We would need to get confident we could pull something like this off?
Yeah, so I did reach out to our health department and they did a little study which showed we could get more than I expected in units.
For septic.
For well and septic, because we don't have any town water or sewer.
What did we think that number was? That the guidance was four per acre?
Yes, it's like 21 if you, 22 if you multiply though, is the max.
I have it right here.
I thought it was the min.
I mean, sorry. Yes, the minimum, maximum, yes, that's your way.
You have to do at least that.
What I'm saying is.
There, here it is.
A developer could put one on there, as long as we allow up to 22.
Yes, I see.
Sorry, that's one of my confessions between maximum and.
And that's something I, I'm still not clear about. It's, we have to put four, minimum four housing units per acre. Can, can a developer say, I'm going to put six?
No, so they're saying the minimum, maximum has to be four. That's what I'm trying to square away here. The minimum number that they will let us have as the maximum units per acre is four. So we couldn't say you cannot exceed two units per acre. You, we couldn't say you cannot exceed three units per acre. We could say you cannot exceed 10 units per acre, I would very be, be against that. But if we say you cannot exceed four units per acre, state's okay with it. Developer doesn't have to put four units an acre, they could put anything less than that or up to. That's the minimum.
Yeah, it's not really self.
Let's, let me read the sentence and make sure we believe this. We understand that this 5.75 acre parcel must be used for housing at a minimum for housing units.
I think we need to rephrase that sentence.
Okay.
Okay.
I can do it really quickly.
You're a lawyer.
Sorry. I, thank you for doing this letter. I know we discussed about possibly me doing it, or you doing it, or nobody doing it, or just relying on Amy. Amy, if you're here, chime in.
So I thought.
So I thought the letter was good. Let me just really quickly wordsmith that sentence.
I wondered if we should put this information, the septic.
That's what I was, that was my question.
I think the water and the septic, I kind of am with Mike.
It's a total of 90 bedrooms, because that's how.
They're going to do what they want, but let's not recommend those, I'm kind of thinking.
Do we have the zoning to enforce it?
The, this, the whole thing is, this was my main point last time. This is the state saying, screw your zoning laws, we're going to do it how we want to. To which I say, screw the state. I don't want to listen to you shoving stuff down our throat anymore. I made my point last meeting. And it's okay that it's not in this letter, I'm not going to buy it.
Okay, so I, okay, so how I see this moving forward is Jacob, you will submit the corrections to me.
Yes.
Okay. You will draft a paragraph about the septic and the, and the water.
Yep.
The other one little thing is, it says we wholeheartedly agree with the detailed letter that we received from the planning board. I don't know that we have their final letter yet. And I'm sure I'm going to wholeheartedly agree with it, but I really haven't seen it and I'm kind of hesitant.
And there's, there, so this is the tricky thing. There's might include townhomes and so.
So what if we just struck out wholeheartedly?
Yeah.
I don't like adjectives like enthusiastically and whole, I've watched some of these meetings of these enthusiastic endorsements, I was like, they weren't enthusiastic.
That's funny.
This is true.
Do we need to have that sentence on at all if we don't necessarily agree with the detailed letter that you received from the Northborough Planning Board? I understand why we want it, I'm reluctant, not knowing that planning board is a new planning board. I don't know.
We can strike that whole paragraph.
Yeah, it's not that, nothing against the planning board, it's just I can't really agree with a letter that's.
Yeah, I, I have no idea what it's going to come back with.
If we're going to, to vote as a group and say, we really, our, our passion is for single-family homes, then we'll just strike this paragraph.
Yeah.
Paragraph two.
And this is where I, I'm way outside my league. Like, there's no, we get this land and we can just do what we want with it. If we wanted to transact it quickly, like to Del Webb.
Northborough to get it.
What's that?
You're saying for Northborough to get it.
We got this land somehow, could we just say?
We the town.
Yeah, Del Webb, do you want to build some more? Do you want to build three more?
I don't know that we could do that, that fast.
Well, the town, Stephanie, the town technically can buy it, right? We can be a bidder.
We could, but we don't want to.
I don't.
We're not good with real estate, as we already discovered.
Yeah, I know, it's smart stuff.
I mean, I will be, I will be the toddler for it. Diversify.
Yeah.
We have, we have someone with their hand up.
Yeah.
Can we take the public comment?
Oh, it's Rick Leaf.
Hi, Rick.
Well, it's Rick, it's always a lot. Hi, thanks for listening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I've been kind of working in the background with Laurie and Amy on this. And my understanding is that, that the state is going to auction this land off in September to the highest bidder. And the questions really are, to what extent, if any, does this project have to conform to our zoning? Some of the letters, I think Stephanie, you've seen that have been sent into the state so far, have been trying to get clarity on that. And Reina really hasn't provided a lot of clarity back, except to say there's going to be at least four units per acre built by whoever the highest bidder is. And it could be more than four acres per unit. And the exact type of construction will be up to the, the bidder. I think the letter that the planning board is trying to craft, and you guys are talking about tonight, is just to advise the state as to what the town's desires would be, what weight that's going to carry with the state is up, is up for question because the state's not issuing an RFP on this particular pro, this particular parcel of land. Other parcels of land, they're actually going through an RFP process where they're going to have multiple responders and pick the one they think is best. This particular parcel is going to go to whoever bids the highest. All they have to agree to is build at least four units per acre on the property. And so it's a little bit up in the air right now as to what that's exactly going, is going to look like. I think the question about, is our inclusionary zoning going to hold or not? I think is a key question, and we haven't gotten any feedback from the state, as far as I know, confirming that any part of our zoning would apply to this. And as far as the town acquiring the land, the town would have to actually put a bid in and outbid Del Webb or Pulte or somebody else to acquire the property to decide to do with it next. So, so I think the main thing about these letters that you guys are discussing tonight and the planning board is discussing is just indicate to the state, from our perspective, what we think is important and to advise the state to maybe provide something in their bidding rules that might require some of the things we think are important. But I'm not convinced the state is actually going to do that. I know that the, from what I've understood is Governor Healy has basically told DCAM, sell as much of this land as fast as you can and get housing built on it as fast as you can. So I think the successful bidder is going to be the highest price and the one who agrees to get something up there as quick as possible. That's my understanding of where this is going. And I think the letters will be advisory, but I'm not sure exactly what weight they'll carry. And from my perspective, I would hope that inclusionary zoning would be required. But I know that Laurie and Amy have sent at least two sets of letters into Reina and she's basically come back both times and said, you know, it's basically four units per acre minimum, that's what we're looking for. So that's my understanding of what's going on.
Okay, so I'm, I'm confused again.
Thanks, Rick. Can I ask you, do you, my reading of, so I've read the actual act and all the guidance document. And when they say minimum, we need to allow minimum of four units per acre, if we say we allow up to four units per acre, we've satisfied the state's requirement to allow a density of no less than four units an acre. In other words, we didn't say three units, we didn't say two units, we didn't say one units, we say four, but cannot exceed four meets their requirement.
I don't think it's that clear. I think their requirement is they want to see at least four units per acre. If a developer comes in and wants to build at a density of more than four units per acre, unless we have some control over that. The only thing I understand is that we have some site plan review ability and some ability to discuss the project with the selected developer. But to what extent we can enforce our zoning? Or to require to say that, you know, this is a six-unit per acre project, but we don't want anything more than four? I'm not sure what ability we're going to have to do that. I, I think there will be some review either between the, before the planning board or the zoning board by the selected developer. But it's still not clear to what extent we have any control over the number of units built on the project. I think it could be more than four units per acre. It won't be less than four. It can't be less than four because the state requires that. But it could be more than four units per acre. And as far as water and sewer goes, you know, Del Webb, it seems to me is a very possible prospective winner because they may be able to connect to what they already have very easily through their existing abutting project kind of thing. I would assume they're going to be very interested in bidding on this. What they might propose, I don't know, but a model might be what's right next door, which is going to be luxury condominiums.
That's in Westboro, Rick?
Yeah, it's 55 plus.
It's right next door to Buss's property.
If you look, if you look at the property, like it was, I mean, Del Webb looks like they would naturally just finish off the triangle if they own the whole thing. Like, I can't speak for Del Webb, but like, but and you also look to the access that it would have to Little Chauncey and some of the trills. Like, there's a really walkability, and I meet many people that live there on my walks, and most are part-time residents with family in the area there in Florida, very active community. Like, it would be a, it would be, it would, it would be a natural fit.
So do we try and sort of tip our hat in our statement, you know, starter homes?
55 plus?
Well, or duplexes and townhouses for retirement age individuals or something.
I mean, there's a demand for that and.
We would prefer this and maybe, and maybe somehow it means something that Del Webb is, comes in as a bidder. Maybe it helps.
I think it's smart because our biggest population are seniors. So I think it would be welcomed, I'm saying, rather than, you know, going with the duplex townhouse.
Because you wouldn't say a senior has a starter home, you would call it.
Right.
You know, but you don't want to make it too complicated.
Yeah.
Some way of tipping our hat, saying like, yeah, Del Webb would be great, let them expand.
But if they expand, and Rick is right, that it's, that it's minimum, that it can be four or more units per acre, they can, Jacob.
So I'm reading Section 122 of the Affordable Homes Act. This is legislature's language, so we don't have to guess about it. A city or town may impose reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures. We've talked about that in the past, and that's not what we're caught up on here. Or determining yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space and building coverage requirements, which we basically addressed with the planning by saying just like, otherwise comply with our zoning laws. Right? And a city or town may require site plan review, provided however, that the city or town shall permit not less than four units of housing per acre. So if we permit four units of housing per acre, we are in compliance with the, the prohibition against permitting, allowing as a right, because this is all as of right, less, a number less than four units per acre. This does not say we must permit more than four units per acre. We could choose to, consistent with this, I recommend we don't. But the city or town shall permit, meaning as of right, not less than four units per acre. So again, I'm saying if we permit as of right or recommend that they put that into the auction documents or whatever, if we say we're comfortable with four units an acre because you basically told us we have to be, we're not in violation of this. But we can signal, I think, and I'm encouraging us to, to say, we're not comfortable with more than four. More, we're comfortable with four units an acre as of right, which is what you told us we have to do, is the minimum. But we're not comfortable going anything higher than that. And I will, within the gift laws and other things that I'm bound to, bet a steak dinner at some restaurant in Northborough to anyone who wants to disagree with me on that. Anyways.
Confidence, you're right. Not because I don't want to buy dinner, I'm just, I have a lot of confidence in you.
Yep.
It's just my opinion, but I'm just reading it. We shall permit, meaning grant as of right, not less than four. It means we can't say three as of right, two as of right, one as of right. But if we say four and only four as of right, we're not in violation of this.
Twenty units, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I agree, I like that.
Yep.
Put a cap on it.
Yep.
That's why I'm saying maximum of four, because if we say maximum of four, we're not in violation of the law the legislature passed.
Do we have any affordable housing bylaws that would apply to this, that we'd want to call out, that would make our?
That's what he's talking about, the inclusionary.
Inclusionary zoning, 10 units or more, 15%.
If it's more than 10 units, 15%, but the guidance that they did give us says we don't want anything to be required to be affordable. That's what the guidance is, that's not what the legislature said, that's what these bureaucrats are saying.
I guess, I guess to just ask to get, should we, I mean.
We could.
To put that, signal that, I think that is viewed favorably by the state. I think when I, when I saw the interviews after this, there was a lot of frustration they didn't get the bill they wanted.
Could be.
So I'm not deep into the bill, but I did watch the governor and the champion of the bill, and they're frustrated they didn't get what they want. And my sense is they probably wanted more teeth for affordable housing that they didn't get. So I don't know.
I would agree, I would agree. I would advise that the letter include a recommendation that affordable housing be included. You could even say to match the inclusionary law that our town has passed is 15%.
Yeah, I support that also.
I would do that.
Okay, so to move on, Jacob will continue to help me clean this up.
Okay.
We are going to include the inclusionary bylaw that we just passed. We're going to include information about water and septic. And are you back to duplexes and townhouses?
I mean, with the affordable housing piece, I don't know how we sort of, it seems like we're kind of.
Boxed in.
Well, no, I mean, right, it's kind of the opposite, right? Because if you're talking about the affordable housing, you can't do single-family only, right?
Well, I think you can. I think.
Can single-family be considered for that?
I thought that, I thought that I heard this based on listening into the.
Is okay.
Yeah, so over eight, so someone's going to come in and there's like, that's a lot of housing, just set three aside.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the only thing I have to ask you is that I, I want to talk to, to Amy about this because if their letter says duplexes and townhouses, how will this, what, will, how will this look to whoever's reading this? That, that we're only for starter homes? Well.
Who has to send a letter? Nobody has to.
Yeah.
We want, I think we're saying we want. So wouldn't our letter supreme over the planning board?
Easy there, easy, I'm just kidding, yeah, I guess, I mean.
I mean, if there's a disagreement.
Right.
Wouldn't we be the body to decide whether or not we send a planning board memo or a select board memo? That's what I'm saying. It may not be supreme, but if there's a decision to be made.
Yeah.
So the, if I can just chime in, this. So though, if I can just chime in, the same section, which has a notice requirement, it specifically calls out planning boards, zoning boards, and, and select boards or city councils for their comments. I would take that to read, they are certainly entitled to give their comments. I don't, I don't, I don't actually think that anything we're saying here is inconsistent with. It may be a difference in focus.
Right.
And I, I'd prefer, I mean, I'm kind of with, if, if Mike's still kind of on these focus on single homes, I'm kind of with him on that. And if they choose to not put that.
It has to look like North Borough doesn't have it together because the planning board's saying one thing and we're saying another. Like, I'd like to make a point.
I think the fundamental, like, if the inclusionary zoning, if we add a little bit of information about that, that we'd like to maintain that goal of fifteen percent beyond ten units.
And I know you don't like some adverbs and adjectives, but we could say something like ideally, single-family homes. Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
I just don't like enthusiastic when it's not reflected in the record.
Okay, curb your.
Did we mention anything about a preference to retirement age, fifty-five plus or no?
Well, you know, when you talk about single-family homes.
I would say single-family homes or fifty-five-plus community.
One or the other.
And then that fifty-five-plus community could be, so Del Webb has seven hundred people on campus, fourteen buildings, fifty apiece. So they'd be looking at getting another hundred and fifty people if they did three more buildings on that side. I would be totally open to that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I don't know how that works math-wise, but I trust you.
Okay, so single-family homes or fifty-five-plus community?
Rick still has his hand raised. Sorry, go ahead. I don't know if you had another comment.
Okay.
I'm just listening at this point. I, I just think that the select board letter and the, and the planning board letter should have some consistency between the two of them. I don't think it's, it's good practice to have the, a wide divergence between what the select board thinks we ought to be doing and what the planning board thinks we ought to be doing. There needs to be, I think, some consistency between the two letters. I don't think it'll help our cause to be coming at it from completely different perspectives.
That's what I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards too, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So I think we're all quite close into what we're thinking here. And I've proposed a couple of just line item changes, just that we've already talked about. And we've talked about needing the water, we've talked about needing inclusionary, we've talked about needing to look at what the planning board is doing. Given that I'm not, obviously, we want to symbolically be on a uniform front and be on a uniform front, not only symbolically, but it's a good look. But also given that we all kind of know that they may completely disregard our suggestions. Because of all those, combined with how close we are, my suggestion would be that this board move to authorize the chair, because we got to have some kind of vote today, to, with the comments made today, to talk to the chair of the planning board and then with our comments today, finalize and send a letter with all of our blessing based on our vote today. Is that something anyone would be interested in doing?
So moved?
Okay.
Is that okay? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so I will, I will speak to Amy tomorrow and I'll speak to you about the paragraph.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so next on the agenda is our schedule. Before we discuss this, can you, our, our joint meeting is when with?
It's August twenty-sixth. And then September second is the first financial planning meeting.
And September second?
Yes.
Right, August twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't think I'm going to be available September second. But that's fine.
But that's fine.
Yep.
Okay. All right, just to keep that in mind, that we have.
That's that, the department head financial summit, basically.
That's a Tuesday night?
The twenty-sixth or the second?
The twenty-sixth.
Of what month?
The financial summit with the department heads, but it's, you know, all of the financial groups will be there. You guys, appropriations, financial planning, the department heads. So they're going to, you know, walk through their proposed fiscal twenty-seven budget.
Right, so that's the financial summit, August twenty-sixth. And then what's September second?
The first financial planning meeting. That's for capital.
And we're going to that?
No.
Oh, okay.
You can if you want to.
Okay.
It's a fun night.
We're going to twenty-sixth though, right?
Yes, yes, definitely.
So that's.
But those are the two dates that we have.
So that's.
To start the budget season, yeah.
All right, so it looks like two meetings in August and two in subsequent months and.
I just have one question. So the date, there's two dates, October twentieth is a school holiday. I don't know if that matters.
What is it?
October twentieth is, there's no school on October twentieth. And I think it's Dewali.
The, the school, the, I don't know the school.
I just looked it up. So I don't know if that's, I know that we've tried to be in line with that. I don't know if we want to switch it.
But if you switch it, it's the eighteenth, Columbus.
Columbus Day? The thirteenth is Columbus Day. Which is the week before.
Fifteenth is, and the twentieth is another school holiday, no school for the kids.
Yep. There's a lot of them. And then the other date, I just don't know what our thoughts are on December twenty-second.
I didn't like that one.
If we could, if, so those are the two that I don't know if we want to adjust it, but.
Yeah, the, the date that doesn't, sort of a hard no for me is August eleventh, just because I'll be traveling overseas.
Oh.
So I'll be, from the tenth to the twentieth.
Sure, if we did the fourth or the eighteenth possibly?
Yeah, I mean, I can make before or after. And I know we have a joint meeting on the twenty-sixth, so before would be.
I can do either the fourth or the eighteenth, I'm flexible.
We don't have another one in July, right?
No.
Okay, so, so this would mean our next meeting would be August fourth unless something else comes up, right?
Right.
If we moved.
But do you say August fourth?
I was, I was, I'm just playing with Mike's conflict here.
Oh.
Moving the eleventh to the fourth.
Yeah, and I think we'll probably have, right, some important stuff on that August meeting.
Yep.
So I'd like to, I'd like to be involved, so.
We'd like you to be involved.
Okay, so.
I think you'd prefer the eighteenth.
I'm good with either of those options.
Eighteenth if you?
Throwing that up.
August?
Yeah.
On the tenth to the twentieth, I'm, I'm, I'm traveling.
Would have.
So let's see.
This, I'm pretty open, so whatever you guys.
I can do the fourth.
I can do the fourth.
Or even later that week, the week before he leaves, if that works better, like the seventh or something.
I can adjust to the fourth.
Sorry.
So we're going to move the eleventh to the fourth?
To the fourth, okay.
Thank you for being flexible.
No, don't worry, it's easy.
And August twenty-sixth, since we're meeting, if we have to tag on a, you know, a quick meeting.
Uh-uh. I mean, I think it's going to be long. It's every single department head.
That's great.
Yeah.
We have like pre-reads ahead of time, like with numbers and stuff that I can look at.
We did this meeting last year and it was more of a, they presented and there wasn't a lot of, I don't remember a lot of questioning.
Their numbers?
But, but you know what? See, at that point, it's so early in the stage. Yeah, let me, let me figure this out.
It's a very long meeting.
And I think duplicating what happened last year maybe isn't.
No, 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 and I heard. I did watch it.
Oh, you did?
I watched it, yeah, yeah.
It was just long and it was just kind of like, hey, this is what we want to do. And it's like tough to have questions and dialogue.
Well, and honestly, we can't, we can't do that. The questions can come after, to me, if you want to sit there and jot down notes. But it's so long because it's every single department head. And, but I want to make sure that it's worth everybody's time and, you know, we're focusing on our goals for fiscal year twenty-seven moving forward. So I will think about this.
Doesn't have to be pretty just Rodney, whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then the, sorry, and then, just so I'm clear again, so that's, I'm working on the summit. On the second, that optional finance meeting, was that one again? Because they just.
That's financial planning, just they're kicking off their capital planning meetings, yeah.
Early, usually.
Very early, yeah.
Yeah, usually it's in the year.
Yeah, and they requested that, yeah.
Do we have a full financial planning committee yet?
No, no, and it's been put out there, put out there. I think during summer months, everybody's busy and they're not, you know, sign me up.
How does that, how does your position get filled?
So I was planning board.
They apply.
But I, I, I mean, not to speak for people, I think we're going to have two resignations. I think we're going to be in the hole on financial planning committee, so we should try to drum that up now.
Well, we have been.
Represent, like who are appointed?
You think two people are resigning?
Has to appoint.
I don't.
For not running for re-appointment?
I don't, I think there, I think we should make sure we have a full financial planning committee. I just think that there's a chance that we could find ourselves trying to fill not one vacancy but up to three. We have one vacancy now.
Yeah.
And that's you.
That's me. I'm vacant.
But doesn't planning, if, if John was appointed by planning board, planning board has to.
Yeah, but it sounds like we don't have any applicants, but maybe we should.
I know summer's hard though, I get that.
Laura is so good at finding applicants.
I, well, I, I think that if the planning board is their designated, they should probably put a push for it.
Okay, all right, well, that's actually a good point, but we have to vote on this.
Okay.
Yep, let's vote on this, but with that, just planning head, yep.
Okay, so we're changing August to August fourth.
Yep.
We're keeping September? Keeping October, what, we don't have an alternative?
Okay, we try.
I mean, if, yeah, I mean, I'm, if, if we want to move it because of the day off.
I'm not here on the twentieth, I don't know.
What if it pushed to the twenty-seventh or the twenty-first?
I'm on vacation.
You know what, maybe?
Can we look at a different date for October? Because it's a.
So the sixth of October works for everyone, right?
Yeah.
I moved it there. Is it, is it the sixth now? I don't know why I moved it there.
October.
Well, we had October six.
We have it too, I have, that's why I have it there.
Okay, yep, so.
Do you want to move it to the twenty-first? Are you on vacation the whole week?
And I get, so the twenty-fourth is a Friday, that's when I return.
Okay.
I, I can do the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh.
The thirteenth is not a holiday.
Closed on the thirteenth?
Oh, is that Columbus Day?
Columbus, Indigenous Persons' Day formerly known as Columbus Day?
Yes.
I don't know what they're.
Whatever your persuasion.
So there's October twenty-seventh?
Just try not to get.
And is Town Hall closed on the twentieth too, if that's?
I don't know if Town Hall falls the school schedule.
Library, I think that's all over.
For sixth through, so what about the twenty, oh, wait, twenty-seventh you said is a holiday?
No, twenty-seventh.
Should we do the twenty-seventh?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yep.
Now, are one of these dates going to be a special town meeting?
There's another question.
Yeah, that's another question. Let's just finish this first. And then we have executive session.
It's, it's early for this.
Should we just keep, so do we just want to keep, I, I'm, what, what's the decision? Do we want to move it to the twenty-seventh or just keep it at the twentieth?
Well, the twentieth.
Diane will be here, right?
Stephanie's.
Yeah, I, we're, we're fine. I'll have everything put together. I just don't know, is it really a holiday?
The school, the school is, the kids are going to be home that day.
It's, I just checked their website, it is a holiday.
Okay.
But it's not the.
It's not a federal holiday, it's not a baking holiday.
All right, that's fine. So just keep it the twentieth then.
The thirteenth is, is not an option because Town Hall is closed, correct?
I mean.
Yeah, that one is a, that one is a federal holiday, I believe.
Yes, that is federal.
All right, so keep it the twentieth.
Yep.
And Diane will fill in for you?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right, everybody okay with October? Move on to November?
Yep.
We're good with that?
Yep.
And December, oh, December twenty-second, that's getting.
We don't love that one.
Do you, do you want to move it up a week or something or?
I mean.
Like December first and?
Or do we just hit it right away after a break?
And December fifteenth?
Oh, we could do that. How about the first and the fifteenth, no?
Either that or load up the eighth with a nice, heavy meeting and be done for December.
Given our meeting, that would, that would be December first and second.
Well, I remember last December, we were, it was Arpa crunch time. Those are long meetings, so we don't have that on our head.
No, thank goodness.
So we're doing December first then?
You want to do December first and fifteenth?
When's Thanksgiving week?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I think that December first is the Monday after.
Last Thursday, so that's.
Thanksgiving's the twenty-seventh?
So that'll be the Monday following Thanksgiving Day weekend, just FYI, everybody. I'll be here, but just saying.
Okay, so I have August fourth, September eighth, September twenty-second, August, October sixth, October twentieth, November third and seventeen, and December one and fifteen. Is that what we have agreed on?
We change the eighth?
What about the eighth?
I have December eighth as a date. You said the first and.
She's shifting the two December ones a week earlier to not be.
Because the twenty-second is getting so close to the.
So we're changing December, we're getting rid of the eights and we're going to move that to the fifteenth?
Yep.
Eighth is going to first, twenty-second is going to fifteenth. So each of those are advancing a week.
So your dates in December, the first and the fifteenth?
Perfect. Good unions.
Yeah, that's good. So, so now, let's not think about special town meeting yet, but.
What about executive sessions for the stuff we're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, we need, yeah, because I have other unions we need to meet with, we, yeah. So do you want to pick like another day of the week instead of Mondays because I feel like they're filled up? It doesn't matter. I mean, it could be, I know, you know, year of your work and whatnot. So you couldn't do it during the day, but we could do it at night, that's.
Do we plan to have those full remote or is that possible?
Yeah, oh, of course, yeah, we could do that.
Which ones?
Executive.
The executive.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
It works pretty well.
It does, yeah.
So what date are you thinking?
We could do it a little later so you can get.
I, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me.
How many, how many do we need?
Need us to meet?
Like ASAP for.
For the contracts or for like elegant banquets?
For the contracts and elegant banquets and St. Gobain.
So can we do all of that in one meeting? We can, right? We can schedule a meeting to.
I'd say like, we should, I think we should pick three dates and then I will arrange like who's going to be on what. If you guys could just give me three dates that, because.
Three dates for three meetings?
For three meetings because I have two police contracts, I have the NIMA contract, I have the St. Gobain's executive session, I have the White Cliffs executive session. So at least three and then we can like merge, you know, people together.
Okay, who's here next Monday, July twenty-first? No one's here? You're here? John, are you here?
Checking, you're quick right now, checking.
I can't think on the fly.
I am.
I think July twenty-first is okay for me.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, Thursday, Friday. I'll be traveling but not overseas, New Jersey, unless you count that as another country. I'll be traveling, but not overseas, New Jersey, unless you count that as another country, but...
I could do the, I could do the 21st.
I could do, yeah, I mean, generally during the week, weekdays, I can be flexible. Tuesdays are late till 7, kind of similar to, to Northborough, so that would be a late start, but...
So want to say Monday, the 21st for one?
Yep.
I think so. What's our notice requirement for those? 48 hours?
48 hours, yep.
What time do you want to start? I can start as early as 5.
Just gotta make sure we tell John the right start time.
Is, is the earliest time?
Totally got hazed.
It was an honest...
And then my teams went away, and my, my, so I was sitting there with my phone in a weird, it was a weird night.
Is 6:00 PM the earliest you can do it, Mike?
Um, I mean, at least give me time to get home.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that, that would...
Well, what's the early, you just tell us, what, what is it?
Yeah, I mean, 6 would give me, like, time at least to get home, and then I could sign in from...
Okay, yep. All right, so we'll do...
As opposed to sitting at work.
We'll do 6:00 PM, so July 21st, we said?
What about the 28th?
Oh, sugar.
Well, we have to give her three days, so maybe and...
Yeah, three days, so let's just do it, I guess.
She wants three meetings.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying with 28th.
Oh, I'm good for that, too.
I am not. I'm on vacation.
Okay.
I'm not here either, on the 28th.
Okay. How about, um, can you do, you're gone the 24th, right, you said?
Of, yeah, 24th and 25th of July.
Could we add executive session to the 4th meeting and add, add, and bank something out on August 4th?
Like, after our open session?
Yeah.
How much would we have on that agenda?
Let's try and keep it low, light.
We just...
Yeah, try to, I mean, I don't know how much is gonna come up from now to...
I mean, I, I feel like we should just, I know it stinks, but can we...
Just block it.
Where are we at now? We're at, um, that, today's the 14th. Can you guys do anything, like, this upcoming Thursday night, or?
I land at 7:30 at night on Thursday.
What about...
Oh, wait, this upcoming Thursday, on the 17th?
Yeah.
You're traveling.
You're traveling?
Yeah.
Okay. What about the 16th, anyone?
Does that give you time to post? No.
No, doesn't, forget that.
It Wednesday?
Yeah, it doesn't give me time, yep.
I'm traveling.
Okay, so this, the, this week is out, unless we need on a Friday, which...
Which if we're doing that, we're doing it at the tavern.
Section off a little corner. Meet your select board, meet your select board, fire select board a drink.
In open meeting.
It's a public place.
Is it possible?
I mean, I mean, can we, can we...
Shorten our, so if we've got other things on agendas coming up that are not time sensitive, can we take...
They're all time sensitive. Think of what...
But for our, like, our standard meeting, can we, can we adjust things on our standard July 21st meeting to add the executive session to that meeting?
I'm with you. I, I think, don't you think we can manage that a little bit? Cause a lot of this stuff...
Wait, what do you mean, the July?
We don't have a July 21st meeting.
July, July 21st is an executive session only.
Right.
Sorry, I meant...
You mean, like, for August 4th?
The August 4th meeting.
For August 4th.
What, what do you want to do?
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, August 4th, it's, it's stretching out everything because we have, you know, we're in retro pay right now for all the unions. The, um, St. Obane has, like, a hard September date that they need to, you know, go before their CEO. White Cliffs, they're not gonna just hang around forever. Like, we need to, there's so many things we have to do.
Okay, how about July?
If we put one of them on that August agenda, rather than, like, are there other things on the August agenda that we can push on?
Yeah, yeah, but let, okay, so July 21st, you guys can meet.
What about July 23rd? Anybody in town?
I am, I'm traveling for work, the 22nd to 24th.
Oh, the 22nd to the 24th, okay.
What about 29:30? Someone said they were gone.
I'm on vacation the week of the 27th.
But we meet on a Friday? Exa...
I'm okay with it if it's not a, if it's not a repeat deal.
July 2...
25th, or the 18th?
Or did someone suggest the 17th already, or was that?
I think the 17th is...
Too close?
Oh.
No, we said the 17th, I could do something, but I thought somebody...
Somebody said they weren't.
Yeah. Didn't you say you're traveling?
What day?
The 17th of July.
Like, this Thursday?
Yeah, I'm gone.
You're gone, okay.
Okay, what about July 25th?
Am I needed? Am I needed? If I'm the only person that can't make it and there's...
You are needed, Laura.
Everybody else that's a quorum?
We need you.
I think some, we're gonna have to, like, make some sacrifices.
We probably might...
Cause I've got my vacation in August coming up.
I think, I think I'm more hopeful how quickly we can work through St. Oban and for White Cliffs because we have all the facts. I think we can have a dialogue. I don't think it's as much, I think we can do that, like, in one executive session.
You think?
I do.
Also with the union contracts, I feel like I'm much more up to speed on the process for that, now that we've done the other one.
And you'll be up, more up to speed, too, because I told John today I'm going to, you know, Redline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think for all those reasons, the union contract parts, from my perspective, all have fewer questions.
Yeah, I feel like we're, I feel like we've done a lot of the work. We just need an executive session to capstone some of those things and debate and come to a, a strategy and, and a recommendation. I feel actually pretty good about it.
Okay.
Maybe I'm being too optimistic, but I feel pretty good about it.
I think you are, but I like it. I like it.
I think if we're all focused on this, you know, I think we're gonna have to figure out ways to be efficient, just...
Yep.
Okay, so the 21st, um, we have a meeting. The 22nd, could you guys do the next night? I know it stinks, but...
Not until after 7.
Traveling.
But I could start at 7, so I'd probably...
I'm, I'm, I'm traveling 22nd.
He's gone 22 to 25 and gone the next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, we have July 21st, and then we have August 4th.
August 4th.
Yeah.
But we, we haven't answered the question, July 25th?
Yeah, he's gone.
No, he's gone to the 24th.
Is that the Friday?
I'm out. I'm not around.
You're not around.
I think the possible viable Friday is this Friday, the 18th. But I'm not the one that suggested that.
I'm getting home.
It's not coming back to me.
No. I mean, I'm totally okay with it. I will not be available. Just, I, this trip this week is...
I can't really do the 18th.
Okay, strike that one.
The 18th will be better. I mean, there's just no way I'm gonna be able to squeeze it in.
I think we keep what we have, and we see if we need to prioritize something, and we do if we need to. But we have some good time slots. The August 4th agenda is unknown for select board. We can figure out if that takes form.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to just, like...
And then let's do the stuff quick that we can do first. Like, if it's a license approval and it's easy, we just want it.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be a pain. I got a lot more travel coming up for work, so it's gonna get tricky.
Okay.
Okay.
Day, night, two weeks, out of town vacation, locked and loaded for the rest of the...
The summer's over. The summer's over, you're ready.
I gotta catch up on work.
All right.
All right. Okay with dates? Wait, do we need to make a motion? Oh, gosh. Oh, now you...
So it's August, August 4th?
Okay, August 4th.
September's the same.
September, okay.
October's the same.
Yep.
November's the same.
Yep.
And December 1st and December 15th.
Perfect.
Okay, you guys ready for a motion?
We have a motion.
I am ready, Madam Chair. I move the board vote to approve the select board meeting schedule for August through December 2025 as followed. August 4th, September 8th, September 22nd, October 6th, October 20th, November 3rd, November 17th, December 1st, and December 15th.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Mike. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. Now, next thing on the agenda is reports. And we've got a beautiful report from Stephanie. Stephanie, do you want to...
With pictures, yep.
Share your highlights?
Yep, Town Clerk's office, Andy's last day was on July 8th. After 38 years working for the town in Northborough, he showed up to the department heads meeting wearing a shirt. The front said officially retired, and the back said bye. We wish Andy the very best, and it's good to know he's leaving us in good hands. We have offered the Town Clerk position to Damon Bartek, who's coming to us from West Boylston. She has a lot of experience and fortunately has already gone through the whole codification process.
Awesome.
Stop by and introduce yourself and welcome her. Health and Human Services, Isabella Caruso. The director has both a high school and college intern helping them out, as well as educating them to help with their promising career paths in the health field. Her department has been closely following Medicare/Medicaid cuts and is helping out the public with any questions they may have. The Board of Health has been discussing the creation of animal regulations. More to come on the development of this. Senior Center, Carol. The director is busy setting up fun events such as the Wusox Game, Hamilton, which is the monthly movie, and educating people on tick-borne illnesses. She wanted to remind everyone that the bistro is open for soup and sandwiches Monday through Thursday between 12 to 1 at a very reasonable price. The food is so good.
So Tuesday night, it's not open anymore?
No, I don't think so.
Wasn't it, didn't it used to be open? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
Sorry to interrupt.
Veterans Agent Jeff has filled the open Veterans Agent position. Yassel Farrara will be taking on this role. She's a Navy veteran with a lot of experience in project management and has worked as a VSO officer. Accounting, July 15th is the deadline for moving prior fiscal year bills. The preliminary tax bills have gone out. Assessors, fiscal year '24 appeals have been settled. Reevaluations are plugging along. They, should, it should say. They will be notifying the public that the new assessment values will be posted in September. Currently, their rep is reviewing their figures prior to posting personal property. DPW, Scott.
Sorry. Their rep, that's someone from the state person who has to approve it all? That's the rep?
Exactly, yep. Scott Sharpentier and his crew have been busy with several projects. $1 million of paving completed on Davis Street, Davis Ave, Bridle Path Drive, Rustic Drive, and Sunset Drive. 450 feet of guardrail replacement on Bartlett Street and Washburn Street. Took ownership of fiscal year '24 dump truck and fiscal year '25 bucket truck. 50% of ARPA-funded crosswalk improvements complete. Tight tank construction began. Police station siding substantially complete. Permitting for two culvert replacements and two bridge replacements complete. Dam permitting through Shrewsbury and Boylston complete. HVAC designed for PD and library under review. Building Department, Old Britney's Cafe is now the new Diamond Cafe. It will be open seven days per week from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and will serve breakfast, lunch, dinner, and ice cream. Local collaboration will enhance their menu from the Red Barn and Trembetta's Farm. Vertex has replaced the old Bank of America in town. They bring high-level experiences and business opportunities, offering showrooms and office spaces. Interaction by events, dinners, and lectures focus on innovation. They integrate technology using 3D headsets to attract investors. Vertex prides themselves on sustainable growth and innovation. I can't wait to go down there. I have to check that place out.
Is it, is it for the public, or is it, what is, what is...
So it's for business investors. I think it's, um, they set up, um, even, you know, cabinetry and, and, um, showrooms areas, so you can kind of go in there and get a feel for, you know, what they do. And, and it's even, you know, technology-based, so they have, like, your little 3D, um, you know, headset that you put on, and you can build whatever idea you have in your head. It's so, I have to go down there because I, this is from their website, but I, I can't wait to go down and, and learn more about it, and I'll report back. On a less promising note, the building inspector in conjunction with the fire department will be boarding up vacant buildings such as Casa Valarta and JJ's to ensure safety. The buildings will be marked with a red X indicating to only fight fire from the outside, identifying no inhabitants. Police. The chief has filled the dispatcher opening by hiring Alyssa Worcester. Kind of like Worcester, but Worster. We welcome her to town. He will also start the youth police academy this week, helping to recruit, recruit our next officers. IT, the new assessing software is working well. New firewalls will be installed, which will require work on individual computers. The transition to the northboroughma.gov will be coming in the fall. Currently working on a cyber incident response plan with assistance from departments. Planning, we recently received $200,000 from the DCR as promised from the purchase of 432 Whitney Street, which was a great bonus, seeing as though we typically have to pay preservation groups such as Sudbury Valley Trustees to hold the conservation restriction. That money has been deposited back into the conservation account. The Trails Committee is working on a design for trails, which will bring more outdoor rec to town. On June 30th, another downtown streetscapes forum was, was held due to the busy summer months. There were around 30 people who attended. The consensus was to continue the project at a lower scale. We have two grants which were awarded and will go toward project enhancements.
You received the grants?
Did I say that?
We have received two grants which were awarded.
Then, yeah. Because I, I, I have my department head meetings, and if that's what she told me, that's what...
What, what's the value of the grants? Do we, do we know?
Yeah, I'll find out.
One was MVP and one complete?
Was the, um, yeah, complete streets. Yeah, yeah, but let me, um, I'm gonna note that. Check on amounts.
I thought MVP was coming later in the summer, but I might be wrong.
Okay, let me check. Lori, the planning director, has a high school intern helping out who's very interested in government and environmental issues. Lori will bring him to a committee meeting and help him understand the application process from start to finish. Vinny, our conservation agent, will bring him into the field to learn more. It's a win-win for all. Rec. Rec is going on their third week now of summer camp where everyone is having a lot of fun. So some programming will take place in the downstairs gym at Town Hall from 9 to 12 and 1 to 4, 3 to 4 days a week, if parking looks busier than usual. As we begin early planning for the fiscal '27 budget, I wanted to bring to your attention a concerning trend regarding rec departments declining program revenue, particularly as it relates to our long-term sustainability. While this is not meant to raise alarm, it's important that the town be aware of several structural challenges that are beginning to significantly impact our revenue capacity. These include loss of competitive edge. Neighboring communities now operate rec departments with dedicated facilities and three to four full-time staff, all funded by their general budgets. In contrast, Northborough's rec department continues to operate with only two full-time employees and no dedicated space. Limited facility access. We pay rental fees for school use, unlike peer towns that face no such costs. The lim, this limits scheduling flexibility and drives up program costs. Economic pressures on families, rising household costs are making fee-based programs increasingly inaccessible despite high program quality. Reduced summer camp weeks and state camp regs. A reduction from eight to seven camp weeks this year resulted in a $42,000 gross revenue loss. New camp licensing requirements are also deterring some program partners. Low registration and increased competition. As of the summer, rec advertised 45-week-long programs, and due to low registration, had to cancel 11. Additionally, expanded free programming, like the library, a wonderful community resource, is further impacting our fee-based model. Rising operating costs, busing, a minimum wage increases, custodial overtime, maintenance responsibilities. For instance, Melican Middle, Middle Schools fields continued to strain the department's modest operating budget. Looking ahead, we face a critical question. What role does the town want its rec department to play in the community? Whether it's expanded childcare, community events, or year-round programs for all ages, we will need the structured staffing and facility access to deliver. We welcome the opportunity to continue this conversation during budget planning. We thank the community for their continued support of rec as a core contributor to the well-being of Northborough residents, and that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jacob, do you have any reports? Just briefly, um, I did go to a Fire Station Building Committee meeting, and, um, quick update. So I, I brought to their attention, they already knew about it, but there was a noise-related complaint relating to breaking up boulders. And, um, we got assurances from the architect or OPM account.
Or OPM, yep.
That, uh, they're gonna do the best, have the contractor do the best they can. There's some limitations and constraints, because we don't want to delay the pro, process of the project, but to, to the best they can do it in more of the nine-to-five period, as opposed to early mornings or late. So someone had asked us to cut down construction hours, which does not seem like a feasible thing to do. If this thing is gonna stay on time and on budget, we can't go from a 12-hour day to an eight-hour day. Our bylaws allow 7 to 7. That's what they're currently supposed to be doing, is 7 to 7, but they're gonna try to break the rocks and do the noisy stuff more in the middle of that period when, when they can. So we did bring that up. They were removing a good amount of contaminated soil. No shocker there. And, uh, overall, though, project is on time and on budget. No major deviations.
Did you say there was a lot of contaminated soil?
I mean, a lot is, uh...
Well, we knew that, yeah.
Some amount. Some amount that was not a surprise.
From a prior use.
Yeah, it's being dealt with appropriately and within the budget and the bids, so there's nothing...
There's nothing abnormal about it, yeah. We're working with the state official.
It's within the budget. It's being taken care of by the contractors, is what was reported in our Fire Station Building Committee meeting. But trying to keep an eye on those kinds of things, and overall takeaway, we seem to be on schedule and within budget. No major, um, change orders yet to be worried about.
Thank you.
Including, um, I, I want to give props to, um, the fire chief, and I may be missing someone else, is, was, or is about to, or has just, is working on, I don't want to jeopardize it, negotiating with, um, other land users to try to let us use some of their culvert capacity to try to let us use some of their culvert capacity so that we don't have to go relocate another drainage culvert that D O T. wants us to do in order to deal with drainage. It, it seems like he's been, um, doing a good job with our neighbors to collaborate in a way that will save us from having to do a big change order. So thank you to him for that and everything else. But anyway, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. John?
Not an official report, but I did get the chance to check out the dog park on Saturday, and it's amazing. Like, the, what they were able to design and accomplish is, like, the best dog park I've ever seen.
Yeah, I'm good.
Like, I'm not a, don't, I'm usually like trails, more dog parks, but the woods and the way that they designed it, I think that, I, I mentioned to Scott for the meeting, it's just really well-done. And I think what we probably need to work on is a communication opening strategy because it's getting a lot of use.
I know.
And it's not open yet.
People are emailing us, like, this is amazing.
And there's trashes, trash is overflowing and, like, so there's, and not, not, actually, the trash does appear to be the D P W trash based on the boxes that are open, not a lot of, not, not residents typically would say.
Yeah.
But like, we, we should probably put a plan to open it because it's being used.
I know, I know. It, and it was just the, you know, the, the fence, they were fixing something else grading-wise and what, it, very minor things.
Very minor.
And then we're gonna have the grand opening, but you're right, people have beat us to it.
So is there a grand opening scheduled?
Not, I don't have a date yet, but it's very soon. I would say by the end of July.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It'll be impromptu.
Yeah, so cemetery, all is quiet. K three A School Committee had, uh, nothing to, nothing to report, uh, at this time. Uh, Youth Commission, um, they've selected four youth liaisons for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Allison Dennehy, Emma Pearson's, Jeremy Moyer, uh, and Aaron McCary. Um, so they're gonna hopefully have those interviews to begin soon. And their next meeting is September second at seven, uh, seven P M. And they invite all select board members, uh, and Town Administrator Stephanie to, to attend if possible.
Can you send that date out, please, or tell me what it was?
Yeah, September the second.
Oh, financial planning meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At what time?
Competition. Seven P M.
Oh, shoot, yeah, I can't go. Okay.
Financial planning.
Scholarship, sorry, I got them on multiple things here. Um, uh, they've got, uh, their auction coming up, which is their biggest fundraiser. So they're trying to put out the word now for any businesses or individuals who would like to donate anything, uh, that they can. Would love to look for big things like vacations, getaways, or sports tickets, um, if possible, but, um, anything is, is, is much appreciated. Don't have anything on how to do that, but, uh, their, uh, scholarship committee is easily locatable off the, the town website under the boards and commissions. Peaslee School Committee, um, we had a quick meeting right before the meeting with the M S B A where the O P M. was making their presentation. So the committee had a kind of a quick meeting to cross some Ts and dot some Is on the request for services for the, for the O P M. Um, and then the M S B A meeting, uh, seemed to, seemed to go well. O P M. is well-known by them. They've worked on a lot of projects, um, and, uh, were able to seemingly, from my perspective, answer the questions that the M S B A, um, associates on the call had. So Stephanie, I know you were there. I don't know if you had any other.
Yeah, no. So, um, following that, they agreed, um, to P M A.
Right, right, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, that was the whole point of it.
Yeah, P M, yeah, P M A. Lots of acronyms.
That should conclude my reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. So congratulations to Community Affairs on their most attended concert yet. Playing Dead played last night and it was packed. People were parked all the way down Northgate. Coming up on July twenty-seventh is Houston Bernard. They've got some really great, um, sponsors for their concerts, so I want to extend a great appreciation to them. Also, thank you to the D P W. for the great cleanup at, after the party, um, after the event. I wanted to let everybody know that I met with the talent with Steph and with Isabella to review the benevolent funds, uh, committee, just to really see how it's working. Since the reorg of the department happened, there's been a delay for various reasons. So there's more to come on that, but we are looking at it. So if you have specific feedback about that committee or questions, please let me know. With the trails, so the Trails Committee has been spending a lot of time cleaning up four thirty two Whitney Street. Unfortunately, they didn't budget, there wasn't a budget for the cleanup, and right now they're at four dumpsters, I think, that they're estimating for cleanup. And they don't have the budget, so they just want me to mention it. Not sure if there's money anywhere for it. I think they said it's three hundred and forty-five per dumpster. I could be off on my numbers, but that's approximately.
The D P W.'s not locked. I mean, they can get in there.
I'm sorry.
We just.
They're in the process of hauling off the stuff right now. I.
You're right.
Don't tell Scott.
So I'll talk to me.
Just gonna borrow one of those new trucks.
He just sent me a picture of more hazardous waste left there. I go, oh.
All right. I was told there wasn't hazardous waste at four thirty-two, but.
Oh, no, oh, no. I'm talking about the, um, the brush. Yeah.
Okay, but no, I was assured that there's no hazardous waste at four thirty-two. Exciting news from the library. There is a new program coming, uh, for, oh, my gosh. I can't believe I lost the page with the name of it. I'm so sorry. So by the end of the week, patrons will be able to access Blackstone Unlimited. It's a new collection of thousands of audiobook titles. Every title in the collection is always available with no wait time. So if you are a reader who likes audiobooks and, um, not having a wait is amazing. There's no checkout limits and there's no due dates. They'll be available through the app or the website, so check out the Northborough Library's website this week. All you need is your library card to be able to access it.
That's good.
It's incredible.
Yeah.
I wait months right now. I mean, I love Libby.
Because I'm too busy, so.
I love Libby, but I have to, like, queue things up months in advance before I can get them.
Okay.
Um, so definitely check that out, and I think that concludes my reports. If I missed anything, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, I just have one thing. Look forward to the mural at the splash pad.
Yes.
Beginning tomorrow. The painting begins tomorrow. Sorry?
The garden, will do their gardens tour this weekend?
Oh, yeah, the, um, well, the, um, Northborough Garden Club is celebrating its hundredth anniversary this year. And as part of it, one of the activities was a garden tour this past Saturday, and they had almost a hundred fifty people come through.
Amazing.
Wow.
Yeah, it was, it was an unexpectedly pleasant surprise.
That's so good.
I had really positive feedback about it, so.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, so next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone, there's no one here. Is there anyone? Online?
Hello?
Thanks for sticking this out with us.
Okay, doesn't look like. And future agenda items, will we discuss executive session? So I think we're good with that, right?
Yes, yep.
Um, and any other business to come before the board? Anything from any of you then?
Oh, um, just the signatures you guys need to.
Okay, don't leave until you've signed?
Yeah.
And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much. This concludes our meeting at, what time is it on the dot?
Ten forty-five on the dot.
Okay, wait, where do I sign? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm signing these ones? We're here.
I'm not sure I know your name.